Paul.
Did you hear from him?
I didn't, but I was confident.
Everyone says it might be in California.
But we have that meeting tonight, so I'm assuming he didn't go this week, so.
I don't know. With the quorum and with the time restraint, I should probably.
Yes.
Yep.
Go on here. We don't really have any minutes to prove from previous.
I don't think so.
So we'll just move on to the first. Thank you Heather for, I think you made some copies for us. And the first one.
I did two, as long as Heather has them, that's good.
Yeah.
Yeah, I want to do the same thing first, I guess. This is a. There is a current, we do have an ordinance already. 158-1, right? So. I think you got. Whoever it was, either the chief or sergeant. Did the first crack at this, right?
That is correct. I did it with assistance from Tom from Board of Health.
Good, send shield.
Yes, correct. Just because I wanted his input on this as well, because not only was it important for us to determine what a food vendor was, but also what permits or requirements they had that we kind of need to make sure that we regulate it. So before we're going to turn on issue a vendor permit through the police department, we should probably make sure that all the checks and balances are done through area health. So that kind of incorporated the spirit of this as well into this ordinance to incorporate both pieces. So it also takes into consideration where a vendor could park legally in the city to sell their wares, their goods, their food. But it also makes sure that they're required to get a permit from us and area health to obviously be able to serve whatever it is, if it is food. But to also stay away from the brick and mortar types of stores, the stuff that has kind of pretty much run the city for many, many years. You know, and this kind of started from Nicholas Pizza was kind of one of the, one of the first ones, not to throw a name, but as far as he, he really kind of brought it to light that there was a person that was parked on Water Street that was selling, not even a similar product, burgers. But he says someone that may be coming in to grab a pizza. He goes, I've been here and I've paid my dues and I pay monthly fees and.
He might stop outside and get a burger instead.
Exactly. Wheels him away from the pizza place to let me go grab a burger and you know what? Now you just deterred from that guy who's been in that storefront for 30 years because he pulled up in front of a meter and threw a couple quarters in the meter.
Yeah.
So we wanted to make sure there was some type of regulation on this. We did mirror or outline some of the ideas that West Haven, Hartford, West Hartford uses for theirs. Obviously they're a much larger scale. This is definitely scaled back, but I think it still gives the same idea.
I just, what I did, I mean, there's, you can see in these drafts, there are some edits in this second pager. Section 158-2, I just, instead of say, saying shall not operate a food service establishment. I change it to say shall not sell food to the public without a valid permit issued by the Director of Health. I just thought it was, it seemed to make more sense. And only a person who complies with the requirements of this section and the related requirements of the Torrington Area Health District, rather than the Public Health Code. They changed that, you know? Because I don't know what the Public Health Code is, that's all. But we do have requirements of the Torrington Area Health District. So that, I mean, that changed. Then the second, next page. It just edits some of those, make it read better. Torrington Area Health District and so forth. So I don't, I mean, there's not a lot of. Didn't really do much with this.
Except for that one confusing part you added there.
Which one are we looking at?
On that same page, just under.
Page three.
That's why I was confused while you were confused.
Yeah. I believe I.
Oh, yeah, 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 right.
All right.
Yeah, that was the part, yes, you're right. I just couldn't figure that out. Okay. So we're all set with that?
Yep, I made that adjustment based on your recommendations as far as to make those changes.
Oh, okay, good.
So I did adjust that just so the language is more clear. So it says now provisions of this section shall apply to itinerant and transient food establishments in the business of manufacturing for sale or dispensing of food and/or beverages intended for human consumption and every person operating a hotel, restaurant, store or vehicle for selling or dispensing food and/or beverages to the public. The Torrington Area Health District permit is required before applying for a Torrington Police Department food vendor permit. So I just tried to clear it up as you requested.
All right.
Just so that the language is a little bit easier.
And then there was. Second to the last page, I guess. 158-14, no street vendor shall then within 10 feet. I have a question. Is a street fender, vendor defined?
Do we know, what is a street vendor?
It could be any of the ones.
So they actually fall all within the same vendor under the definition. So we have itinerant vendor, street vendor, itinerant merchant and transient merchant, all within the definitions.
Page where?
First page, yeah, under the definitions. So they mean the same thing. They're all, they all fall under the same, any person from a corporation, whether as owner, agent, designer, employee, whether resident of the city or not, who engages in a temporary or transient business either in one location or traveling from place to place selling and delivering goods, wares and merchandise within the city of Torrington.
Where, where are you reading?
Under the definitions. First page, the down under itinerant vendor.
Yeah.
Right in that top section.
But does it refer to a street vendor? That's all I'm asking.
Um, actually, I think under your discretion, when you sent me back the note, I added street vendor in there because I looked at street vendor.
Oh, good.
And it fell under the definition of an itinerant vendor. But we had to include them both because we have a transient merchant and an itinerant merchant.
Yeah.
And you have an itinerant vendor and you also need to have a street vendor.
Okay.
We had to be all inclusive.
All right, all right. So we're okay there?
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, I cleared it up within the definition of the four.
How does that apply for our street vendors that actually do Franklin's?
Yeah.
Franklin Plaza. And we don't want to be charging $150.
Every time.
No, because those are special events. So those would fall outside of that. So I don't think.
That'd be parking wreck, maybe they would.
That would be because Franklin Plaza is a separate entity. So as far as that's more through.
The parking wreck.
Permission, yes.
So they set, they set the fees for those vendors. Whenever they hold events.
In Memorial Day one, as far as they do get a vendor permit, when the guys that are walking around selling the balloons and things like that, they do come up and they do get their vendor permits for us.
From you guys.
For those special events. So they do that now as far as on that, but I think parking wreck usually regulates the other half.
Okay. As long as, you know, we wouldn't want to discourage, you know, nor do we, you know, any other kinds of events that might, you know, be. It's the fees, I think, where I have the most question and how do you determine? I mean, so the example you use with the guy going with the balloons or whatever, what's, what are his fees?
Well, and that's just it. So I don't really have a thing, which is why I pretty much brought it to the board for you guys. And that kind of falls into your category. I use what was kind of around the smaller cities as their stepping stone or their base standard to go from there. But again, there isn't anything that I can find that says specifically what a certain fee should or shouldn't be.
What were the top end fees?
Well, they were, you could go 500 West Haven, 500, 1,000. But they for, for a year, West Haven actually supplies power. But they pay a percentage of the power bill for the receptacles they have in those larger ones, like especially the one in New Haven, we have it right along the water where they have 30 of them. And they actually have people that are sitting in line waiting every year to renew. If the person doesn't renew, a person in the lottery actually says, hey, listen, you've come up, you can turn around and apply for this. So there's a big standing. It's a, it's a very driven market right now. People are really into food trucks. They're really into food merchants in these pop-up type of shops. They really like them. I don't know if it's just because of with COVID or whatever the circumstance. People are drawn to, even Bad Dog having.
Yeah, they have their food trucks there.
Again, they have their food truck there constantly for, for some type of, and people are attracted to it. So I don't know how long it's going to last, but.
No questions?
I was just going to say, so you feel as though $150 is reasonable?
It's with.
Imperatively?
I would think as far as, and again, $150 for, you know, yearly or seasonally seems to be reasonable as far as you figure the average meal, if you go in and buy something from your itinerant food vendor. What are you looking at? 25, 30 bucks? So really, I mean, in the course of a season of four or five months, I don't think it does too much undue stress to try to cover that cost.
Okay.
I don't know. And, and the chair.
I just.
Do you want to speak?
I didn't, I didn't, it's not my ordinance.
I was just an observation. Does it make sense that to not actually have the fee in there, but it's set annually suggested by the police department and approved by the Board of Council? As opposed in order, ordinances are much different. Change. Yeah. No, you would recommend, you got to recommend. No, they would be set by the Board of Council.
But you're just saying, don't put it in the ordinance.
I mean, ordinance, you know, because then if it escalates, which is what we kind of talked about. With relation to garbage.
Correct.
You know, the, the cost of, you know, the additional containers, it has to go through that process. I'm, I, that's just an observation. That can establishly annually approved.
I actually like that idea.
Yeah, you do too.
And we don't have to come back.
Council fee schedule beginning of.
Annually.
fiscal year. Annually. Beginning of every fiscal year, where I don't know if that's July.
I mean, it could be the same fee from year to year.
Right.
Yeah, but it gets reviewed by the.
Yeah, I agree.
But, but if we see like the fees going up really high, then we can always adjust and, and, you know, increase our fees or the cost of doing this increases your, your costs. We need to increase fees to do it.
We're also going to hear, have, have we spoke to any, you know, fix site, brick and mortar restaurants? I mean, they're, they're going to object to this, yeah.
Well, they actually, as an example.
So in talking to Nicholas Pizza, his biggest gripe was that there was somebody that was parked across the street from him on Water Street.
Right.
And talked to him, talked to the, talked to the food vendor as well. He was not very receptive. I should be able to put the money in the meter here. Well, no, that's not the idea. The guy who's been here for 40 years does have a little bit more priority. So within the body of this ordinance, we did separate that. We, we had them make sure that A, they're not in paid parking. They can't be in our lots. They, as long as it's a legal parking space without parking meters and they have to be a certain distance from that restaurant. So that way then it provides some distance. So they have the right to be able to park, but most of our parking downtown is metered park.
Yeah.
So that is a little bit of a benefit for our guys that have been here for 30, 40, 50 years to be able to continue to, you know, have some sort of luxury, I guess, for better way to say, or priority to be able to have their services.
The taxes that they're paying.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. You know, and quite frankly, because I'm going to, my mind's thinking, you know, that, that fee that we're talking about 150 probably is not adequate.
Five years from now, with the cost escalation.
Yeah. It's competitive, it's a very, very competitive business. It's not fair to the brick and mortar guys that.
It is. And again, in, in talking to the street vendor, his words were, I pay for overhead. I said, you are correct. I live in the city and I pay taxes as well. I said, and I'm not denying you that right. But we just need to have some type of like regulation. You can't just wheel up in front of Sasso's and start selling hamburgers because you have a legal parking space. That there has to be some type of guidance here, which is kind of what drew us to starting to look at regulations on what do other cities do? This isn't a problem. And New Haven's is actually, ours was kind of in between. New Haven had something like a thousand or 1,500 feet from the nearest thing that sold a similar product.
Sure.
Or it is a getaway from our people here. So.
Sure.
It definitely was a lot more separated there. This was again reasonable. Our town is, our city is obviously as big. So we wanted to keep it a little bit more reasonable, but I, we also don't want to say, hey, you can go sell your stuff at Pinewood's. I mean, we, within reason, but still kind of keeping people away from the people that have had a priority here for a long time.
But I think the control here becomes that fee structure.
Yes.
And that, that needs to be a council.
Right.
And that needs to be, because we also don't want to encourage. You know, anybody who can throw together a truck, you know, think they can sling some hash and pull up and start, you know, that has, that will, that will create another problem in a town where, you know, disposable income is, is not, you know. Well, there are people like that who have seen the interest there is in food trucks.
Sure.
They just go out and decide that they're going to have a food truck.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah. And, and, and that is not in the best interest of the long-term investment. So I, I think that the fee will, you know, immediately will have to have a longer discussion, bring in, you know, again, long-term restaurant. Well, when you have a public hearing, there may, there may be some questions as to the fee.
And it's a good opportunity, I think, that the, during the public hearing.
Balance.
But I think taking the fee out of this at this point as an ordinance.
Yeah, I think it's a good.
No, 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 no.
Yeah.
Again, but it's saying that's the way to go.
Yep.
I mean, really drop it on the city council.
Yeah.
Because of a lot of other issues around it.
So I, I had a couple of questions in terms of, so private property. So if, you know, someone wants to have a food truck, you know, for a large party. fundraiser, whatever it might be. Are these going to apply as well?
Private property as far as.
You mean, if you wanted to do that in your house or something? I would say no.
Okay.
Yeah, we have no.
Okay.
I mean, you would hope, you would hope just for his liability sake, that he would obviously have a reputable food truck in there that's clear with some type of area health district. But I mean, obviously if that's.
They do have to get a food permit.
Yes.
You know, so I know that, you know, it's not like they can just, you can't bring your van over.
Like you said.
Well, do my conversion van into a, into a food truck for the night.
Stick it someplace.
And I got a grill in the back and I can make you some pancakes.
Yeah.
That's what.
Because I also think Tactical Arms has had a food truck on their property.
Yes.
I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
So this would not necessarily apply. Okay.
They still have guidelines that they have to follow for permits.
For safety.
Yeah, yeah. Well, that's what I mean, other than the normal, you know, right, food permits.
Yeah, we should be able to still ask as far as they should actually, it should still be hung up. If they have an area health, they still need to have that cleared. That should be readily posted. That's just through regular area health districts from wherever they're from.
Okay. Well, I appreciate the work that you've done and due diligence.
Very good.
Do we have any other questions?
Yeah. Well, if, if this starts to, again, starts to multiply or metastasize this issue. Who's responsible for checking permits? Is that police or is that, is that, you know, is that public safety? Who, I mean, who would be checking? Health Department?
Health Department would be checking the health permits during the operation of a truck.
Yeah.
Could potentially check.
No, I want to take it, I want to take it off your, your show. It shouldn't be you guys. I mean, it should be other people.
I don't know. It would have to be, it'd be in us. Yeah, because really ultimately we issue the vendor permit. So really enforcement of it or making sure that people are adhering to if they're street.
Checking quality sta, I mean, safety standards for those trucks.
That would be.
Well, that'd be the health department. Torrington Health Department and pay on them every.
Fire marshal.
Okay.
You have to make sure.
Absolutely. He's got, he's got his regulations that happen.
Yeah.
But it would be great to partner with, you know, the Torrington Area Health District and the fire, I mean, so if you went in and said, you know, do you have your permit? You're probably also going to see whether or not they have the other permits necessarily.
I went to a niece's wedding back in the fall, in Portland. My God. It was like wagon trains of these trucks. Almost semi-permanent, you know, roofing structures and people are building fires, they're opening fires. And I'm kidding. And I'm just thinking, you know, especially a beer or two deep in Portland, you're going to be drinking beer. I'm just thinking a city councilman, I wonder how this all happens and gets permitted. This does not look like as controlled as I think maybe it should be, but. I'm thinking we just want to be sure at the get-go, we have controls and like, and clearly a lot of work's been put into it. So thank you.
I know Howie T. Faircons does have like a food truck day, you know, like. Goshen Fairness.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that all the food truck vendors come with the hope to, you know, garner interests in private businesses or, you know, parties or whatever.
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
They do. I love.
Well, they do.
Yeah, me too.
A lot of the breweries, that's really, again, Bad Dog, Red Door, Legitimus, at least locally, as far as they have constantly utilized. Right. And people will follow on Facebook.
Firefly.
And go to each of one of the breweries here just because they know the food truck's going to be there. They're not even, they don't care about the brewery, they go for food trucks.
Yeah. All right. So I think, you know, we'll probably have more questions. Maybe we can, this is the first draft. That we've reviewed.
Well, we can clean it up and then begin, I guess, right.
So I think it would be good to put it on another agenda with the modifications and then get it through our committee and then pass it on for the council and, and then open for a public hearing. Any other questions? We have a lot.
Yeah.
We'll keep moving.
So 5:30 was a good call.
Yeah.
That's right.
I know, usually it's 6:05. So the second item is a discussion regarding a smoking ordinance. This is for all kinds of.
Again, this was a revision, right?
Yes.
I only, one of my only things is on the second page. I just changed. I crossed out that one sentence and just re-wrote it to say that a smoke-free zone includes the area for which a restaurant has obtained a permit to allow dining in a city-owned street, which is what the sentence that I crossed out said. This just makes it a little clearer, I thought, so.
I agree.
Yep.
So it's better, it's improved it.
Other than that. Yeah.
For the library. A lot of people smoke and break their cigarette off there now.
Yeah.
And it's pretty filthy. Our guys are cleaning the stuff up all the time.
We can. Where, in the front or, you're saying inside?
No.
No, no, outside the library. But in our apartment area.
Oh.
And I would also think any facility or event that hosts childrens or museums or something like that. So.
How do we include that without, you know, just needing? No, I know, but without actually identifying a business.
Again, I don't know. And, well, that was, that was chief and I's concern was that, again, we kind of want to incorporate that, but like the, the library is private. So that's, that's a difficult thing.
But, but the outside areas, like the sidewalk's not private.
Correct.
That's public. So I mean, no smoking.
Why the Riverview lot worked out well because that's owned by the city. So it kind of a bus right to the library. And that seems to be where our smoking issue is, is people waiting at the bus stop. If you look, there are just cigarette butts littered everywhere and it just, as you're walking up to the front of the library, it's, you know, you just get plumed.
Now, we're talking about, you know, marijuana.
Yes.
As well, that like.
Well, it's going to be legal.
Well, it is legal.
Or it is legal, I should say it is, yeah.
But I mean, you're talking about cigarette butts or also marijuana butts. You know, you want children picking up either one of them.
Bait sticks and everything else that's out there.
And I think that's in there, right? All our traumatic devices.
Anything and everything as far as, we wanted to make sure that we were not singling one out. Because I know that that's become a bone of intention at other small towns that are starting. Is that there's a little bit of pushback saying, you know, how can you isolate one and not the other? So we're not, we're just incorporating all of it.
Right. So in that, in your, in that smoking restricted areas, could we put it more general? You know, that's defined by children's area. Similar to, and use them as examples versus. Yeah.
Because as you're talking, as you're saying about like the outside side of any purpose, there's a prescription in front of Sasso's, for example. So to, they can't smoke within a certain, according to the rest, they can't smoke within a certain part of Sasso's, but they can't smoke on the sidewalk, as myself started talking about. But they can, so can they go across the street to where the kids using it is, start smoking there? They're, they meet the requirements of that distance between the outside dining and across the street. I would like, I want to, I think we should restrict that.
Right.
Whether it's.
I'm going to tell you something. This is going to be the subject of discussion for a long time. It's not going to be solved tonight.
Yeah, not in one meeting, right?
I don't, you know, you're right.
This isn't the first meeting. This was, you know, this has been talked about. So I think, and it may tie in to all of what we're doing. And I know it's a whole different topic, but you know, the whole discussion about whether or not we're going to produce it here.
Sales and cultivation.
So I think. But I think this is a, a good start. But I do think to your point, you know, we could maybe add some language having to do with.
Youth or children.
Yeah, with the children.
Facilities or events.
Or services even, you know. Childcare centers. For Memorial.
Children, children's youth and family right next to the library. So you have kids that are coming out with different family dynamics that are walking out and they're inundated with people that are vaping and smoking. You have up at Lowe's in June, you have the touchy trucks.
Right.
So you don't want people smoking there. There's something there. Kids that are out to see big trucks.
Right.
So I mean, that's private property. But yet it's a kid's safety.
So can we come up with some lengths of?
Well, I'm just looking at this. It says that any or any assembly owned, leased or controlled by the city of Torrington. Now, don't we control those sidewalks?
Sidewalks, yes.
So when you're talking about going out in front of kids play.
So that would allow the restriction, that language.
So it would, so it would at least tie in that piece?
Yeah. I, I would think so.
I mean, this is where I think we're going to be working on this for a while because these things are going to pop up as we go along. I don't.
Like we were just talking about, it's ironic, that Co-Park, because they smoke free some, but yet one of the sidewalks.
Yeah.
Along the border.
Yeah.
It's a city or a state-owned sidewalk. They still have, you know, smoke out.
Yeah.
So I think, you're right, we're not going to be able to strip it off. But I think if we can just have a little bit of, have the ability for an officer to go up to somebody, maybe in front of kids play. Put that out. And if they give the, you know, honestly, it's just a matter of talking.
Correct.
Just moving them along.
Yeah.
But if they give them a hard time, this gives us a little bit of, you know, you don't want them to play.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, it's, yeah, you said, this is the reason why I'm telling you this, because it's a city ordinance, because we're concerned about this health and safety of children. That's all. Right.
So.
I don't know.
I, you know, the other thing that I was missing in here was receptacles.
Yeah.
You know. And does the city really want to get into having, and that way at least cigarettes, butts or whatever paraphernalia is put into a receptacle.
Less likely to hit the ground, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. That, that is a good point.
Maybe if we, where we locate these receptacles, it would be closer to a trash can, you know, city-owned trash can or, I mean, you have some painted ones around the city, but I'm looking at. If you love this idea, right? One more thing to take care of, but I just, you know, I get.
Yeah, I mean, that, that, I mean, obviously just, you know, potentially could, I mean, we have them at two entrances to City Hall. So. And yeah, I mean, it's something that's feasible, but then it's something that has to be regularly maintained and emptied and. Yeah. And do we want cigarette receptacles?
To me, that just adds a complication that at this point, we don't, I'd rather go with a simpler approach. You just say, no, you can't smoke here. And basically, let's see where we get with that.
It's tough, because if you put up a receptacle, are you then saying that that's a designated area for smoking? You actually almost money the issue by saying, hey, listen, although like you said, I don't want cigarette butts. I don't want vape pens being tossed on the ground, these disposable stuff. But yet in the same sense, all right, so here's the receptacle, I must be able to smoke here. But no, well, no, you're standing next to the children's museum.
You're going to get the wise guys who are going to flick and be this and all that. I just.
Yeah, and if he's ten feet away, and he finds he's not gonna walk the ten or fifteen feet to go to the gutter.
That receptacle, though, I mean, it's similar to private businesses, they have a smoking receptacle.
You know, let's begin simply, no, you can't do it here, no, you can't do it here.
Let's see, see what happens, see what happens.
I, I agree.
Okay.
Yeah.
You could restrict it everywhere except your own home.
Well, it depends who's home.
True. We can challenge it.
I'm not gonna allow it to sneak in my house. All right, so this is a first, not the first draft, but this is, I guess, one of many drafts, is that what you're predicting?
Well, I don't know what you wanna do, I mean, I guess, if there's not gonna be any change to it, except for the minor edit. You wanna put it down for a hearing, or?
Boy.
On the other hand, you might wanna think about what P and Z is gonna be doing, coming up with the, the other half of this problem.
But we could be ahead of it.
Concern of that is if you turn around and now, if you turn around and wait, are you then picking on them? Because if you, if you wait, if you don't get ahead of it now before they put regulations in on sale, distribution, and recreational end of it, are we now picking on the fact that, well, this ordinance has never been in effect, where you guys all of a sudden approve marijuana?
Yeah.
Now, now, you know, now you're gonna start restricting.
Yeah, I would think so.
I think it encompasses everything combined, yeah.
Yeah, you're right.
This is my perceived sick rest.
Yeah.
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 Let's not conflate it.
You're right.
Expansion of our bar, you know, the bars got it out of there, so now I think we're just extending it and start to push it out of the city.
Yeah.
Well, if that, that's the case, then I suppose you're ready to move with this, maybe.
So that's what I was gonna.
Certainly, by doing that, by putting out, but we'll certainly hear the stress points, and then, you know, we'll, we'll adjust, we need to, or say, sorry, whatever. We'll find out what the stress points really are.
Right, I agree, so let's have a motion to accept the draft with the edits.
A second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Wow.
It's ready to go.
The edits are for the children.
Children, yes.
Well, the edits. So it'd be the edits he currently has in there in addition.
I was talking about the one on the second page, just I added a different sentence, I changed the sentence, that's all.
Okay.
It's the only thing I did.
You have to change the sentence.
But can we, I think what the chief is asking is, if the motion could be amended to accept the language change under the restricted areas.
Well, did we?
You meant to change under restricted areas, but it would include kids' play, children's business, at the library, and children's law, such as.
I didn't know we were gonna make a change in the language. Yeah, I thought we were just gonna kind of rely on the fact that it says that there were, this controlled by the city of Torrington included sidewalks in front of the kids' play.
So if the sidewalks are controlled by the city, then we should be able to post signs.
And restrict it wherever.
Zone in front of, you know.
So versus.
Ten feet on each side of Kid City, post signs there that.
Yeah, I'm thinking maybe that's the way to, rather than trying to get specific about kids' play.
Right, right, that's what I'm trying to get away with, too.
Yeah. I know what you're saying, but I'm.
Just saying, would we do it that, like the touch truck, or we do something?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is that, is that not an assembly controlled by the city?
I, I think, yeah, this is, this is pretty, this is gonna require some finesse, when is our next?
Not all, yeah, that's right.
For here, ordinance, I mean, considering how much stuff is, is.
It's a sponsored event.
Another two weeks.
This one, you know, we have done it based on an ordinance being reviewed, so maybe at the end of this meeting, we'll schedule another one in two weeks.
They used to do the one at Lowe's, too.
I'm not sure I'm gonna be here for that one, what are you guys considering to do without me? But I would say, you know, let's give Vic, this, this needs some finessing, legal finessing, the language, you know.
But he's comfortable with the language, you know, that would restrict.
Thinking leaving, leaving it, and then, if it doesn't work, we could always amend it and come back again and then change it.
If we sign the areas that we believe are, you know, again, the CYF, the library area.
Because when you think about it, you're not, it's not gonna happen, nothing's gonna happen unless somebody tries to push it.
Right.
You know, if you tell somebody to get away from in front of kids' play or that touch a truck, they're gonna move, if not, that's, well, then if they don't, that's when we have to deal with it, maybe, I don't, that's my thought.
Yeah, because I think it's hard to identify all the children's areas. You know, kids' play is obviously the library, but then you look at some other areas where they're, they're like youth and family services.
Brooker Memorial.
Brooker Memorial, I mean, daycare centers that are.
This requires now to put signs on all those that we, the council will define, or who's gonna define, the council, police?
The police would define.
Will define those areas?
Define them as you go along.
Okay.
So let me just ask a question, I, I don't, I don't wanna believe this, but if Brooker Memorial, which is a great, if they put out up signs, it's a statute, so Brooker Memorial wants to be a smoke-free zone, or any business wants to be a smoke-free zone.
Right.
This ordinance allows us to force them.
Well, that's private property, right?
Right.
But the sidewalks aren't.
Right, but can we, would we be able to force, so this is only for city property, it's not for private property.
Right.
Still on the sidewalk, yeah, so I guess, so private property still be private.
Right. I think a lot of this is gonna have to be done by year, you know, to see how it works. You're not gonna be able to.
All right, so this was moved and passed and voted on, but then I think, you know, through any.
And if you do have a public hearing, these things are gonna come up, I guess.
And then we could go back and amend it after that.
Very good.
Comfortable with that? All right. You threw it in.
Oh, that democracy.
I know. All right, number three, it's already late, oh, the clock is working, oh my God, I'm so happy.
The what?
The clock.
Yeah.
Been broken for a long time.
It's a little fast, but we're not gonna, we're not gonna belabor the point.
All right, number three, discussion regarding an out-of-state motor vehicle ordinance, so.
Right, I put it up at the top, I think it's my wording, is this final ordinance wording needs to be drafted, because if you look at the first paragraph there, really, what it is, is a narrative as to what we're doing, you know, it says to expand upon the statute, you know, that's not really ordinance language, that's all, and I'm thinking that maybe starting with second, number one, enforcement, that's where the ordinance really starts, maybe. I just think that needs to be reworked in order to read like an ordinance, that's all. I mean, I understand the, the issues, what about the fines and the thousand dollars and that kind of, see, it says, violation of this chapter shall constitute a misdemeanor which can impose a fine up to a thousand dollars, well, it can, but what are we gonna do with that? You know, are we gonna do that, or?
Oh, we collect this.
I just think it needs to be reworked, that's all. But I think we know what we want to do.
Right.
And that is, we wanna be able to find motor vehicles which are not properly
Registered.
Registered in Connecticut.
Yeah.
And I guess that's.
So that we can collect all that revenue, I hate to say it, but. Someone, we use an example like Waterbury, you know, this woman actually got, she would visit, visited her mother, she was a caregiver, she's not from Waterbury, but Waterbury Police actually cited her because she was registered in Torrington, not in Waterbury. And, you know, her car was there every day, so they paid attention, and they have, they could take some action, but we, we don't want that necessarily, that's a lot of work.
I mean, really, really, the whole, the whole idea of the statute, so the whole idea of the statute is for the people that are not within the state, so most of the people that we're dealing with are actually, the complaints I get in my office are New Jersey, New York, Maine is notorious, because you can actually lease a plate from Maine that goes to a Maine, large leasing company, so you don't have to have an address, actually, when you run their registration, the address comes back to Connecticut, most of it, you know, whatever, Torrington, Waterbury, wherever. And because of that, that's pretty much saying, well, what do you, what's the intent of here? Just avoiding Connecticut taxes, because they don't wanna deal with Connecticut's taxes. So you have neighbors that are getting extremely upset that the guy with the New York plate that sits in that driveway every single day for months and months and months on end isn't paying the taxes that the guy who is paying his Connecticut taxes is not, is entitled to, so I understand the frustration. And again, this is brand new, this is really something that Waterbury kind of first started it, if it's going to that level, that's not the intention of that, that's not the intention of this ordinance in the least. This is pretty much just putting people on notice, which is why the, the top section in this is a definition, more or less, of what, what the Connecticut General Statute is, which is probably what it should be listed as, is a, is a motor vehicle registration definition, because this is the statute. The main thing is that the ordinance, or excuse me, the statute allows for an ordinance citation to be issued instead of a motor vehicle.
And that's that Public Act twenty-one, one oh six.
Correct, which is a brand new change.
To expand upon the statute, the state enacted, enacted PA twenty-one, one oh six, so the state allows, using that Public Act, allows us to establish the ordinance.
Correct.
So we, that's when, that's what I'm saying, so we have to draft that ordinance that the state allows us to.
Through, through that, correct, and because really, when, if I were to stop this person, I could charge them on a state level, and it's an automatic misdemeanor, so it's.
Yeah.
And, and to me, and again, this is my personal feeling, it seems harsh, for the, for the penalty of the crime is the fact, hey, you knowingly avoided taxes, and you know, you're avoiding, you know, motor vehicle registration. Here's your summons to court, they're not gonna do anything with it, and ultimately, it, very little comes from it. But why not just try to get them compliant, so you issued them a two hundred and fifty dollar fine that can be waived for first time offenders, as long as you show that you registered in Connecticut.
Yeah.
But you know, again, it, it's kind of holding people to task, just do what's right, you knew you avoided it from the get-go, but instead of trying to give a summons where a person now has to miss a day of work, they go to court, it gets continued, it's long and drawn out, and ultimately ends in nothing, they, nothing ends up being done with it. For here, at least, maybe you can get a few people that go, you know what, you're right, I do have to play by the rules, and they turn around and get registered.
Yeah.
That's all.
I like that, that makes sense.
So I think what maybe we can do on this, maybe you and I can get it together.
I love sitting down with you.
Yeah, same here. And come up with, cut out the chief, you don't need the chief. But yeah, I think, I agree with all that, it's just of dressing it up a little bit, that's all.
Listen, that's, that's more your forte, I'm just the cop, so I wrote in cop speed.
That's all right, okay, so I think that we're not quite ready with it yet, but it would be, shouldn't be too long, we can get it done, yeah.
All right, so we're gonna.
Just table it or something.
Table this.
Well, it was just discussion anyway.
Discussion, yeah, correct.
Yeah, right.
All right. We've been along, so we have the fourth item, as discussion regarding garbage collection.
Garbage.
Right.
Right, that's you.
Hey, hey, I'm in a meeting. Play back.
Thank you very much.
But you can come back and fill this.
I would love to stick around for a trip.
Yeah.
A lot of trash talk.
And I was gonna say, it's trashy, though, that back to me, though.
All right, right?
Well, anyways, so I started taking a stab at this one, and you know what you have in your package, is actually only Article Two.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So let's start to take a look at this.
Oh, okay.
Make some highlights and some changes, I mean, a lot of cleanup needs to be in definitions.
Yeah.
And so then, you know, because, Paul, we had talked about, you know, the annual fee, so it, and it's determined by the Board of Councilmen.
Yes.
So the vision is that it comes to you annually and, you know, recommend the fee for the extra containers, I mean, that, that's, you know, relative to the extra containers. One of the other things to vet is, you know, what is the standard size container we want to issue? Because we have forty-eight, sixty-four's and ninety-six.
What's, what's this height, I sort of always go about this height?
It's probably the sixty-four.
Sixty-four.
I mean, the ninety-six, which is what you have, is the ninety-six.
That's a, that's a mini dumpster.
Yeah, I mean, historically, the ninety-six is one, we have some sixty-four's out there, a couple hundred of them, but they haven't been the standard issue.
Okay. Okay.
So this is a much larger.
Yeah.
amended change to our current.
Yeah, and I wasn't, I didn't get through it all, so these were just my initial comments and changes, but, so I wanted to kind of get them to you, if you looked at Article Two, so I looked at definitions and I.
Can you say Article Two, I'm sorry, one twenty-eight-two, is that what it's?
Yeah, now, it's.
Yeah, okay, one twenty-eight-two, okay.
Yeah. The, and I think, in, in, since we're looking at, kind of doing some pretty dramatic changes, I would, I recommend that the definitions throughout the ordinance should all be upfront. As opposed to being in, you know, a dozen definitions in Article One, a dozen definitions in Article Two, which is the way this one is written currently.
No, I like, I like that.
So all the definitions upfront.
Agreed.
And then adding some more definitions, so in, in Article Two, you'll see that all the definitions were deleted and then added upfront.
Okay. I just wanna, I don't, I don't mean to be more stupid than normal, but, what, and red is original, so that you, that you.
No, and black is original.
And black's original.
Red is, red and green are changes.
And red and green are changes.
And then the yellow highlights are areas to kind of that a little bit more.
And this set, this one that I have here, twenty-eight dash five definitions, this is, again, this is, this is what you want.
The twenty-eight, the twenty-eight dash five is just the original.
Article Two.
The current.
This is currently what we have, okay.
Yeah, it's only Article Two. It doesn't include Article One.
Only Article Two.
Right, which is littering, Article One is littering and dumping. So in the draft I, I gave you.
Did you like exert all of these definitions?
Yeah, I was taking care of the definitions and then going from stuff. And then I moved Article One after the definitions, it talks about littering.
So again, just for our sake, moving through this, we should work off of this version.
I would suggest work up that.
This is essentially your first draft.
Yeah.
Yes, that's what I would do, okay.
And then, as I continue to go through it, I will send you the additional written, because I didn't get through everything.
Yeah.
You know, in, in a lot more detail, I started highlighting some stuff, and, but red is where there are changes from the original.
Okay.
The highlighted red is, so you've got red, unaligned, red crossed out.
Yeah, I started doing it one way, anything in red is, is a change.
Is a change, whether it's.
Whether it's underlined or not, yeah.
And those that are crossed out, like.
Would be deletes.
Okay. All right, we, I think there's definitely more work, you know, to do with this.
Yeah, this is, I mean, this is, this is literally creating a new animal.
Kind of a long-term project.
Yeah, yeah, we're not gonna get it clearly.
So maybe, you know, since it is such a large ordinance and the, the edits are gonna be substantial, would it have some value to just go through section by section? Or the whole ordinance in one at another meeting?
Oh, I, I would say table this, and then at the next, let's make this just the next meeting, separate, standalone meeting.
Right.
The next one.
I would like to include, you know, the food truck one as well, but I think we'll be closer to having that.
Yeah, that, that, that's, I think that's easily done in ten minutes, but this thing is.
I kind of figured this was gonna be.
The only agenda item?
Three meetings, you know, by the time we kind of get through it.
Needs to be really thought out.
And then, you know, as you commented, you say, yeah, I, you know, you like this.
Give a proposed restructuring, right? Give it a proposed restructuring, right, or not?
Or, yeah, so I'm looking on that. Okay. When I did for twenty one, twenty two, the cost per container was two twelve.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, it's, it picks up every year, right? So thinking that was for the ninety six. And if we like made the standard, the sixty four, and slowly migrated to the sixty four. So if anybody wanted a, an extra ninety six, it'd have to be at least, in my mind, two twelve, probably more like.
Oh, I'm, I'm thinking, I mean, maybe I'm wrong. And this is clear, as discussed, I'm thinking if you want an additional one, and we established the base, and if you want additional one, you're going to be paying for, literally for, for that long time only fee to physically have that object, but then you're going to pay a monthly fee as well.
Yeah. And that was going to be like, oh, do we want annual, monthly?
Well, you're going to pay for the unit, whatever that price, two twelve is two twelve, fine. But then, right, I mean, yeah. We don't have, that's where my thinking.
Yeah. And I, I think we're so far from the end.
Yeah, exactly.
So if we give it this on the agenda, uh, we're going to have to end this meeting soon.
Want to motion to table or?
Sure.
Do we need that?
Well, it's just a discussion at this point.
Yeah.
So why don't we, for the next agenda and discussion by, um, committee members, why don't we determine what the agenda will be in two weeks? I think I say two weeks. Is that not good for you? Two weeks and Monday?
This is a real long-term project.
I know.
In a month.
But I could do it if you wanted to do people, if this committee wants to meet earlier, I'd have to be out of there at four thirty.
April eighteenth.
If two weeks from now, if you guys wanted to do it earlier, but then you'd be sitting around, I'd have to be out at four thirty.
Why don't we look at the eighteenth? That's going to give him a month. There's any urgency on.
Yeah. Yeah. I can have my.
So. All right. Oh, that's right. Are we in agreement where at the next agenda, we're going to have the, now called the solid waste chapter one twenty eight on the agenda.
Yes.
Uh, as well as the review again of our food truck ordinance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Some of those.
And, and the state motor vehicle ordinance. So those three items. And actually, we could probably do, um, discussion and approval for the smoking ordinance.
Yeah.
Maybe, or in the food truck ordinance. We already, we already approved.
Yeah.
Okay.
Drop is approved.
Right. So the smoking ordinance.
We'll keep this separate.
Might keep it separate.
I know. So, but we should at least have it as a discussion on the next meeting. That's a month from now.
Discussion of what? The solid. Yeah, absolutely. That's what I'm saying. I, I, this is the one I think we should just focus on. And if there's something that we want to rubber stamp one of these, then that's fine. But as far as somebody that's going to take any kind of, this thing is going to take up.
But if we can still put it on the agenda, the other two, then we have them at least move through to council and then for public.
Yeah, there isn't much discussion, right? It's almost going to be, it's, it's pretty much wordsmithing, right? Yeah, then we can rubber stamp those. Yeah.
I hope so. I don't know. The motor vehicle maybe.
Then maybe a little bit more, but.
Again, a month.
Month is good.
Well, why don't you guys talk? If, if you think, if, if you think I rubber stamp it, then.
We won't set the agenda until a week before. How's that? All right. So right now, can we move for a German?
Yes, I moved.
So you.
Now, all in favor? Okay.
We missed an opportunity to sell some.
Thank you, Heather. For the record, today is Monday, March twenty first. We are in the city hall auditorium. I have a form of the board. Uh, is David Oliver on?
Yeah.
Okay. So present, attending in person, I have councilman Waldron, councilwoman Hona, councilman Manichia, councilwoman Ruette, councilman Cavanero, and participating via Zoom, I have councilman Oliver. It is, we have the wrong agenda. It is now six thirty one P M. Uh, before we get into the agenda, could we please stand and flick the flag?
Of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I don't want on the agenda. I will entertain a motion to open the meeting to the public in accordance with section four E of the city council W P C A meeting rules of procedure.
So move.
Thank you, Councilman Cavanero. And seconded by councilwoman, uh, Hona. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are open. Did we start a sign up sheet or is it just open call? Open call. Anyone from the public wishing to address, you can just come to the microphone and so we have you on record.
Good evening. Ed Aaron, one fifty Silver Fox Lane. Mayor and city council members, hope all is well and safe. Speaking as the co-chair of the building committee, my position continues to be that while I support the need for skate park and many years ago, when skate park was built, Probus Company as the, as president of Probus, we donated money for the skate park. I maintain that Best Pond is not the best and only site that should be considered. My reasons are two. One, aesthetics, placing the least attractive asset on your most viable, visible location on the site makes less sense and goes against the basic principle of land use. We have the opportunity to create a beautiful welcoming opening to our school driveway after the hundred and seventy nine million dollar new school is built. The site of eight foot fencing around the skate park is as best, best uninviting and doesn't take the advantage of the beautiful sight of our new community flagship. Number two, safety, the mixing of younger and older clientele. The mayor and the park and rec insist that the problems associated with the skate park are no different than the place skate, basketball court, splash pad, or swimming pool. I disagree with the assessment Mario outlined according to the report issued a week or two ago that there were twenty four, twenty four calls to the skate park and twenty one to Best Pond. I have concerns with the high school, high schoolers and now middle schoolers walking directly past the site and the people who congregate there, more than likely none of them having a skateboard with them. Like the Park and Rec Commission and the other city council and the mayor, the building committee is made up of a group of people that have dedicated their lives serving the youth of Torrington. There is no one on the committee that opposes a skate park or the skateboard community itself. That is why we are invested so much in making sure that it's relocated to the best possible location for skateboarders and the community at large. Thanks. Have a good night.
You too.
Good evening. Fiona Capabianca. I am here tonight because there has been considerable confusion regarding the proposed site location of the skate park. I see that it is on the agenda to discuss whose responsibility that decision lies with, which appears to be the Park and Recreation Commission. I attended the last Park and Rec Commission meeting where the commission decided they would not be taking any action that night and would be moving any decision to the April meeting. Shortly after that meeting, an article ran in the Register Citizen stating that the skate park would be relocated to the other side of the driveway, even though the commission had not voted on that yet. At a previous city council meeting, it was also stated that the Park and Rec had already voted on this decision. To my knowledge and being at the last meeting, that has not happened. It also stated that the park must stay on the property due to the Bessie Trust agreement. At the Park and Rec meeting, it was stated by the chair that they had been looking at other venues and the skate park did not have to remain on that property. Another concerning piece of that article was the number of police calls to the park. I know of at least one major incident that was not released on the report log. I am wondering if when the school resource officer is the first to respond, that those are possibly not logged as calls to the skate park. The Porta Potty fart fire also was reported as occurring after a football game. That incident occurred during the day at lunchtime while the students were on the grounds of the high school. The article also mentioned that down the road, the volleyball courts would be relocated. I have several concerns with this proposal. The funds to relocate the skate park are being paid through the building project. Where will the funds to move the volleyball court be coming from? It was also stated that the volleyball courts are underutilized. Was there a comparison done regarding the use of the skate park versus use of the volleyball courts? This is the only volleyball court in Torrington that does not have to be paid for. Many of our students do not have the means to play off, in off-season leagues to work on their skills. This is the only court they have to practice on. When the court was originally being dismantled, it was stated that it was due to the dredging of the pond and the volleyball community thought it was a temporary closure. To find out this way that is being closed for this purpose is disheartening. I have come before the council numerous times in my tenure on the board to raise concerns about the location of the skate park to the high school. The majority of the issues that happen at the skate park do not occur by the actual kids that are skating. Due to the high fencing and the large walls within the skate park, it becomes a place for undesirables to hang. If you ask anyone that spends any time at the high school, they can attest to the problems it presents. Everyone wants the kids to have a skate park and they will. We are just hoping the concerns are considered and an alternate location can be utilized for what is in the best interest of the people that utilize the skate park along with the high school and soon to be middle school students that will also be on that campus and the citizens that will be utilizing the pool and the splash pad. Our families deserve to have the sand volleyball court, which ties in much better with the pool and our volleyball players at the high school really need that court. And hoping, I am hoping tonight to receive clarification on if the Park and Rec Commission will be making this decision at their April meeting or if this decision has already been finalized as it would appear in the newspaper. Thank you for your service to our community. It is appreciated.
Thank you, Fiona. Still open to the floor.
Good evening. Suzanne De Pretus, fifty two Santa Maria Drive. I attended the Park and Rec Commission meeting in March and during that meeting, many valid alternatives were suggested for the relocation of the skate park. The position taken by the Parks and Rec Commission at the time was that the skate park must remain on Bessie property to honor the conditions of the Bessie, Bessie Trust. A copy of the trust has been requested for review, so the building committee and the board of ed can better understand the guidelines of the trust and perhaps still be able to suggest alternative placement, but we have not been able to secure a copy. In addition to the many other possible alternatives for relocation, O N G has offered to donate a parcel of land located near the teen center. Allegations have been made that the property is contaminated and could take years to remediate. O N G, in fact, right now is conducting an environmental study, which has not been completed. So there is not any validated contamination as of yet. A recent Register Citizen article stated that many complaints related to the skate park turned out to be unfounded. There have been two significant criminal issues at the state, the skate park in recent months. The arson event involving the Porta Potty was a criminal act and did in fact occur while school was in session. The other significant act involved an individual in possession of what appeared to be an AK forty seven assault rifle. Thankfully, it turned out to be fake, but still a criminal act. I am not at all opposed to the skate park, but I do believe it could be located somewhere where it will not interrupt the volleyball court and does not require residents to have to pass through the skate park to get to the basketball court, the playground, the pool and the splash pad. To remove the volleyball court, to relocate the skate park, will take away from students and community members that utilize the only free volleyball court we have. Volleyball has become a significant part of our sports, sport, excuse me, sports program and has the potential to provide college scholarships and promotes teamwork and collaboration among all the students that participate. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Susan. Still open.
Jessica Richardson, one twenty four Adelaide Terrace. I serve on the board of education, but I'm speaking today as a taxpayer and citizen. My comments today concern the relocation of the skate park. I attended the last Parks and Recreation Committee meeting and I was disappointed to see that the committee already appeared ready to approve a plan to move the skate park across the street and put it in the place of the sand volleyball court. I specifically asked the committee that night if there was a plan to relocate the volleyball court and they said no. Under their plan, the court would be eliminated. I know many students who play volleyball and because of that, I've had the opportunity to see firsthand what court options exist in our city. The sand court that is slated to be removed is the only public court in the city. If a player wishes to practice their skills outside of a team or program setting, there's literally no other place that they can do this for free. The Y M C A offers volleyball programs, but they can cost a thousand dollars or more and that fee only includes structured practice, not open gym time. To my knowledge, there is no open gym time available for volleyball players anywhere in the city. It is also important to know that volleyball is a very popular sport, especially in our community. I find it difficult to understand why we would even entertain removing the only volleyball court in town when there have been alternative locations proposed that would work very well for the skate park. The arguments I have heard, including the often referenced but seldom delineated Bessie Park Trust, do not explain why the skate park would be protected, but the volleyball court would not be when they are currently part of the same complex. I do not have any issue with the skate park or with skaters. Not every teen is interested in playing a team sport and skating provides a valuable outlet for those kids. It is important for their space to be maintained, but this does not need to be at the expense of other members of the community. This does not have to be a situation where somebody loses. We can have a skate park and a volleyball court, but we need for those in charge of this decision to be willing to go back to the drawing board and look at other options. One more thing. In the Connecticut legislature, there's currently a bill proposed, raised S B number three twenty seven, an act establishing a working group to study the implementation of federal title nine protections for all municipal recreation areas and school sports facilities. This bill is moving through the system and just today was filed with the legislative commissioner's office. This bill, if it becomes law, could result in our municipal recreation areas being analyzed in light of title nine protections. While there are men who play volleyball, in Torrington, the majority of volleyball players at youth level are girls. If this working group becomes active, how will Torrington look if we intentionally chose to remove the only volleyball court? A decision that we know would disproportionately hurt the girls in our community. It is my hope that our Park and Recreation Commission, our mayor and our city council will be forward thinking, will keep us out of this potential dilemma and that they will move in a direction that protects both the volleyball court and the skate park. Thank you.
Thank you, Jess.
Mario, on the Buco forty four twenty Farm Lane, I had a whole lot to say, but these people all did a great job. I just wanted to point out a couple of things. You hear the frustration and the contradiction repeatedly. It has to stay on trust property. It doesn't have to stay on trust property. That's where a lot of the confusion comes from. I hate that it's been, it's turning into this us versus them thing. I don't like that at all. Regarding these numbers that came out last week about the police calls, we all know you could use numbers any way you want. There's twenty four police calls to the skate park, twenty one to the rest of the facility. Okay? We all know that there are thousands of more participants in the balance of the facility than there are at the skate park. So that information suggests that police responses are much more frequent and required at the skate park. The commission, the Park and Rec Commission felt like we ganged up on them. And that was not our intent at all, but we all thought, and I certainly thought, based on the conversations with the, that occurred the, the previous Wednesday at city council, that that skate park was going to be approved whether we attended or not. And and Patty's a one man gang and she does a wonderful job and I have a lot of respect for her, but this is the Park and Rec agenda every single meeting. Call order, roll call, facility use, capital budget, budget, old business, new business, other business. That's it. There's no detail. Um, if, if there was an agenda that said, we're not talking about the skate park, we wanted to gone down there and ganged up by him, most of all me, because you know, I tend to blabber too much. Other than that, Mary, you stated that the, the skate park needed to be in a downtown area. I never once in my sixty one years in Torrington said, I'm meeting you downtown and walk to the high school. Fuses Park is downtown. Albert Street is downtown. You know what? I bought Albert Street to you. I actually think Fuses Park is better. After I walked behind there at the Park and Rec meeting. So I would just consider, uh, I know you guys are going to talk about your, your purveyorship over the Park and Rec as a whole, but, um, I think it's proper that the city council at least has an opinion on the matter and gives it to the, the proper people at Park and Rec. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Mario. Still open.
Rick Delavalle, 2691 Newfield Road. Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'm not here to start an argument as Mario thinks that's happening with the people that are for where it is. First of all, the best trust paid over $100,000 to put that park there. So that's $100,000 of their money committed to having the park on their property. And everyone who's spoken so far has said how wonderful that the volleyball. Is that what, what's the park that's moved? Mario, what's the park that's moved? What's volleyball? Okay. So and what I've heard is that it's all students, high school, middle school. With all that wonderful property behind the school, why can't we put it there? If it's for those students mainly, then I think the Board of Ed should supply that. Secondly, what I've heard is all the people that talk say the safety of the people that are gonna be going by there, the safety of the people using the park. I haven't heard one person say the safety of the skaters, the bladers, or the bikers that use the skate park. We want them safe as well. So we bring up the fact that there was 33 calls between 2021 and 2020 to the skate park during that same amount of time. And up to now, there's been 1,198 calls to the high school. So I'm curious as to where the most problems really are. Are they in an area that had 34 calls? Or are they in an area that had over 1,100? So my concern is the safety of the kids who are using the skate park and the safety of all the children in the high school. And that should be prevalent on the minds of the Board of Ed and the building committee. So and the reason I'm speaking for this is that I spent years working to get that park put there in the first place. And when we first put it in and Mayor Quinn decided that it was gonna go there, and that was based on reports from the police department stating that that's gonna be the safest, most visible place for that park. That's really all I have to say. And again, nobody's looking for a fight. We're just trying to protect the people and the kids of this city that are gonna be our future leaders. And a lot of people have used that park already, are already in that position and working very good jobs in this city. So we need to treat everybody the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Delavalle. Still open to the public.
My name is Casey McKenna. I live at 132 Suncrest Court in Torrington. I am a member of both the High School Building Committee as well as the Park and Rec Commission. So I'm not really here to take sides one way or the other. And in fact, if it comes to a vote by Park and Rec, I will be abstaining from that vote. But I just have a couple of observations that I'd like to state. And a couple of them were addressed by Mario, where there's been a lot of, I think, misinformation going back both ways. You know, it was stated at the Park and Rec Commission that our meeting minutes or agendas are not posted on the Torrington website, which of course they are, and they're very easy to find. So and you know, there was misinformation about whether or not we were going to be making a decision that night, which as far as I know, we weren't because it wasn't on the agenda and no one had said that we were going to discuss that. I think we have to keep in mind that Park and Rec was forced into this decision. The building committee, for very good reasons, needs to have that parking lot cleared by mid-June. So there isn't a lot of time to plan on where we're gonna put this. And that just needs to be considered as well. The ONG property, I've heard of a lot of opinions on whether or not it's a clean property that we can use this, but I haven't seen any documentation on it. And you know, with the, as quick as we need to move this park, I think that might be a consideration. The other thing I just wanted to say is on my way down the hill to come to this meeting, I drove by the high school and as I glanced over, I saw about 10 or 12 people in the skate park. So I decided to pull in and talk to some of them. And I talked to teenagers and I talked to some adults who were there. And all of them said that when they're there and when the weather's nice, they have, you know, about 10, 12, 15 people who use it. And the one thing they, ones I talked to all said was they wish there was more supervision because they feel that there is, you know, a problem there at times, but it's not the people who are using the skate park. It's other people who are hanging around that skate park. So I guess I don't feel it's a skate park issue. It's, you know, if there's an issue of people being where they're not supposed to be causing trouble, that should be addressed in a different way. So again, I'm not here speaking pro or con. I'm not even sure which option I prefer, but I just wanted to just make those comments. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McKenna.
Hi, Marlene Carrier, 29, Newfield Road. Although I've been involved in our community in one way or another as a team parent on PTO, as a youth minister for St. John Paul the Great Parish for over 10 years, I've never actually worked and been involved with the city works itself. But I'd like to say thank you, first of all, because I know that everyone here is looking out for the best interest of our town and for our kids, and I really appreciate all of you. If I could just begin by telling you a little bit about my family because it's kind of a witness story. I have deep roots in Torrington. My grandfather was born here in the late 1890s. My husband and I have been married for 32 years. And our four sons are fourth-generation Torrentonians. Our four boys couldn't be any different from one another. It's truly amazing how different they are and have been since birth. Our oldest, Eli, he graduated from Torrington High School, went off to college, and he is a molecular biologist living and working in Boston. He's an avid hiker, a rock climber, and also practices jiu-jitsu. Our next son, Josh, graduated from Old Tech and he is a partner in my husband's wood floor finishing business. He's a hard worker. He enjoys working on cars and weightlifting at the gym. Noah, our third son, is what I call my vibrant child. No one could have ever prepared me for a boy who is as all boy as he could be. Lots of energy, very impulsive, a natural athlete. Zach is our youngest, a pretty quiet kid. He graduated THS and is taking class in computer-aided design. He works seasonally as a landscaper and during the winter as a snowmaker at Butternut. He loves snowboarding. Each one a very unique individual with individual gifts and talents, all of them good and kind people. We've encouraged all of them to play team sports when they were little. They all played soccer and baseball up till the middle school, high school years when it became more competitive. I personally have encouraged them all to participate in individual sports ever since. So why am I here? I'd like to share our story. Noah, our naturally gifted athlete, struggles with chronic depression. And the greatest medicine for him has always been exercise, fresh air, sunshine, and being around his friends. Just several weeks into his freshman year at the high school, he was failing algebra. And as a result, he lost the one thing that meant the most to him in this world, which was soccer. Losing soccer meant not only losing the exercise, the fresh air and the sunshine, but that he also lost the core group of friends that he had played soccer with since he was six years old. That skate park saved his life. And I don't say that lightly and I don't say that for a fact. He needed the park when he walked out of that school every day. When we were talking the other day, I asked him for his thoughts on the skate park and he said, Mom, it was never about the best bikes or who could do the best trick. It's about a place to belong. It's about community. I saw this posted on Facebook the other day and it just kind of struck me. The post is in regard to band kids. And it said, young people can be found in the music department before school, during school, during break, during lunch, after school, and even when they should be somewhere else. For many young people, the music department is more than just a place of learning. It's a place of belonging. Every young person that walks the halls of the high school is looking for a place to belong. Some may belong in team sports. Some may belong in drama. Some may be band kids. Some don't fit into any of those places at all. I think that this is something that we need to really think about as a community. Every kid doesn't fit into the college box. The majority of young people who go off to college after high school are not coming back here. These young people who remain are our future workforce, property owners, and future leaders of our city. Now, I will be honest. I understand the feelings people have expressed who are concerned about the type of kid who hangs out at the skate park because if I had not been blessed with such a wonderfully unique son as Noah, I may feel the same. He's one of the most empathetic people that I know. But now I know. And I know some fine young men who relied on that skate park after barely, after barely being able to make it through sitting in a classroom for six hours a day. When I say fine young men, I mean that. People are afraid of what they don't understand. I've lived through it and I've seen these kids grow into protective members, productive members of our society. Many of them now are successful arborists, store managers, heavy construction equipment operators, HVAC technicians, and craftsmen. I had hoped some of these young men who had found the home at the skate park who are now in their twenties would come tonight to speak, but they're just not there yet. Many of the young men still frequent the park. And you might think, why would 20-something-year-olds still want to do that? But bikes are their thing. It's where they find community. I know any given time you can drive by a basketball court at Bessie Park or Oak Avenue and see men and young men in their twenties and thirties shooting hoops all hours of the day. I love to see young adults practicing healthy social and physical activity outside in the open air. I would much rather my 24-year-old find community there than in a bar. I voted to invest in the future high school because I care about investing in our city. But that's just the building. I think we need to think a lot more about investing in the people themselves. And by doing so, also investing in the health and well-being of the future of our city. I have so much more to say on the topic, but basically I just wanted you to know one family's story and how grateful I am to those who fought for the skate park 20 years ago. My hope is that the skate park can remain easily accessible to those teens who so desperately need a place to belong as they walk out of the Torrington High School every day. In regards to the other areas suggested, putting it behind the armory seems like a very bad idea to me. The park needs to be highly visible for safety. As a parent of a then 15- or 16-year-old, I could drive by the skate park just to check on my son. It's never a good idea to put kids out of sight. And young people unsupervised can lead to trouble. As far as the location near Albert Street, and now I'm gonna sound like I'm judging, and I'm really not. I believe every person has dignity and deserves respect. But clearly, there are some problems with the homeless population in the general area near Co Park that wouldn't be a good place for young impressionable teens. The skate park needs to stay in close proximity to the high school. I've looked at past council meetings and I see that there may be discussion for future recreational areas, and I would be happy to be a part of that. And any further discussion to meet the needs for all of our young people in town. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carrier. The floor is still open. Yeah, the microphone, if you don't mind. Yes, thank you.
I just want to clarify for the record because it was stated that there's been 1,198 calls to the high school from police officers. That is not a factual statement. And I don't want to shed the high school in a worse light or the students there. I'm not sure where that number came from, but I'm involved in every police call that occurs from the high school. And I know for a fact that it's not the case. It may back up to the argument of the number of calls that our resource officer responds to on the property. So I just want to clarify that for the record.
Thank you.
And I also want to clarify when everyone is looking at the other calls to that complex, the 21 that everyone keeps referencing, seven of those are pool alarm calls. So I don't think we can really consider those to be police incident calls. So I'm hoping that if someone is gonna really look at this in totality, that they actually carve out wherever those 1,198 calls are coming from to see what the root cause is. Thank you.
Thank you, Fiona. Still open to the public. Hi.
Tom Kender for Winston Road. Happy spring. I'm gonna change topics. The agenda item I'd like to address is the MIRA contract. I do appreciate all the work Ray and his department is doing on the solid waste crisis. But I'm here to speak against his recommendation. Specifically, I'd like to make the case to go for one more year with MIRA. And so if we do that come July, none of, none of our stuff is gonna wind up in Hartford. Our MSW solid waste is gonna go like it normally does to the Torrington Transfer Station. Then it's gonna go on an all-expense-paid trip to Pennsylvania. If you read between the lines, that's a landfill. So it's not going anywhere near Hartford. Our recycling is gonna go to the Murph Material Recovery Facility in Berlin. So in that facility has had a recent $30 million upgrade, as I understand, where they got all kinds of optical scanners, robotics and AI and I don't know what else, supposedly to sort out this single stream mess that we drop in the blue bins. So what I'm getting at is that the from a Torrington perspective, the waste, the waste-to-energy plant after July been crumbled to the ground and I don't want to impact this at all. What we have a concern about is that MIRA is gonna have sufficient reserves to continue to massively subsidize our disposal costs. And being a quasi, it's a quasi-public entity. So their books are open and you can see how much, how much they have. And all I'm suggesting is it appears to be plenty there to get us through the one year. Now, the downside of this is that when I'm talking about one year is we're gonna have to go with the higher tipping fee from them so that we can retain the much lower opt-out come March of next year. So the reason, what is that, what is that one-year bias? It allows us more opportunity to to look at these other strategies. You know, Ray is, in his, is You know, Ray in his, in his analysis to you, he lists like seven, seven major things that we could be doing, and I think we need to focus on those. You know, I have, I have, I have nothing against, you know, USA hauling, but I tried to, you know, I took Ray's figures, and I looked at it, and I says, well, what's going to be the difference between doing what I suggest and going with one of the options from USA hauling? And I, and I came up with a figure of between $42,000 to $72,000 or $73,000 more for what I'm suggesting, over, you know, over USA hauling. And I don't think, to me, that's not, that's not enough a difference. I think, I think, I'd like to see, you know, if we're going to go USA hauling, USA hauling, I like to substantially sweeten the deal for Torrington. You know, I'm looking at, I look at other, other, other towns, cities that have opted out of Mira, like Hartford, you know, they're going with a, with an agreement where for fiscal year 20, fiscal 23, they're going to be charged $103 per ton for the municipal solid waste, and that includes a zero charge for recyclables. And I think if we, you know, if we look at the, you know, to go with USA hauling too, we're also going to be making a five-year commitment. I think we got to shake out all these other options that we have. You know, I could come up here, and I could, I could propose even, even other options. For example, I'll just throw out one that I popped into my head, is what if we, what if we went with a collection of trash every other week? And then the opposite week would be the recyclables? And then if people needed more, that would, that would reduce us, at least collection-wise, there would be some reduction in cost. And then we would, this is sort of a, one of the unit-based pricing options. It's the card system. It's not the bag system that our, that our good friend Kristen Brown is pushing, but it would give us, and then, and then we would say if, if a person needed, you know, more, either more, an additional bin for, for the recycling or additional bin for trash, then that would be at, at cost. So maybe like for trash, maybe that's going to be like, you know, you want, you want to have extra, extra, you're generating extra trash? Okay, you're going to have to pay an annual fee like maybe $200 more, you know, for that so that we're covering it. And then you could, these are, I think these, some of these, some of these things, I think that we could, there's nothing, I think there's nothing, some of these ideas, I think there's nothing stopping us in doing them, even with the, with the bulk, the bulky waste. There's nothing to say that we couldn't have a system where, okay, say, to be fair to the people, to say, well, we'll have, you can have maybe six, six bulky waste pickups a year. Anything beyond that, we're going to charge you, you know, $40 for a mattress, or if you have a, I don't know, a stack of metal or something, we're going to charge your fee. So anyway, I think there's, there's things that we can do, and I think we should just focus on the, on the, the, some of these measures before we, you know, just jump ship and go with a different contractor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kandifer. We are still open to the public. Last call, public comment. Okay, we'll move into item number two on our agenda. I'll introduce you to accept the meeting minutes for March 7, 2022. Thank you, Councilwoman Riwett.
Second.
And second by Councilman Anitia. Questions on the minutes?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm going to have to say.
Oh, one abstention for the record would be Councilwoman Ona. All right, item three, I'll introduce you to motion. Oh, I don't need a motion for this. This is just discussion, listening to the public outcry with regard to a decision as it relates to the relocation of the skate park. As this council knows, this matter of who has control and custody of park property came up last fall when there was a couple that were, that wanted to lease out our teen center. And at that point, I think Vic undertook a little bit of research to, the couple was trying to leapfrog the Park and Rec Commission to get the council to override a decision of the Park and Rec Commission. So based on that research, this is where we are right now, once again, being faced with asking to make a decision or override a decision that falls under the purview of the Park and Rec Commission. And I don't know, Vic, if you want to talk a little bit about that.
Yeah, the, when you think back to whatever the date was, I guess, when the trust was established, we're talking about maybe back in the early 1900s, 1927, there was no skate park on this property. There was no, probably no basketball court on the property back then. So I don't think we're talking really about assets as much as decision-making. The charter controls, the city charter says that the care maintenance and control of the Elise Bessie Park is, is in the hands of the Park and Recreation Commission. So we can have discussions, which we're having tonight, as to what might be a good location or a bad location. In my view, this is what democracy is about, decision-making. Who makes the decision? Somebody has to make a decision. And in my view, it is not the city council, it is the Park and Recreation Commission. Now, we may agree or disagree with that decision, but a decision has to be made. Now, whether or not there were some articles in the newspaper as to a decision had been already made, in my view, I mean, mistakes get made. I mean, we, people make mistakes, there's reporting, reports perhaps were miscommunicated, but the problem is, not the problem, but the point is that the decision, in my view, has not been made. And that is going to be made at some point in the future. I don't know what more can be said about the role, and I guess we're here tonight to discuss the role of the city council. The city council has a voice in, I guess, in the process in terms of a recommendation, just much the same as anybody else might have a role in that decision-making process. But the ultimate decision is in the hands of the Park and Recreation Commission. That's our, that's our law in Torrington. It's the law that we operate under. Now, if we change that law and say that, well, it depends on, I guess, you know, if it's a real important decision, does that go to the city council? If it's less important, it goes to another agency? Who makes those decisions as to what's important, what's not important? So I think that we have to be careful that we, that we overlap authority. And it's my job to, I guess, try to indicate as best I can as to my opinion as to who has the authority. And as the mayor indicated, we have run into this issue previously, and it was decided back then, much the same way as my position is being stated today, that a decision needs to be made by the planning, by, not the planning, his own commission, by the Park and Recreation Commission. And whether their decision is one that I agree with or not agree with, that's, remains to be seen, but I think ultimately, that's where this decision lies. So I don't know what more we can add to this, that it's been, you know, we've been kicking this around for a long time, and I don't know how I can elaborate any further, but that's my view.
Okay, open to the floor. Paul.
Mark Harboun and Attorney Michelle. I ask for this agenda item to put on tonight's meeting to clarify a number of things. Number one, thank you for the explanation. I think that was clear, lucid, and I, from what I've read, I think it's absolutely clear that city council does not have jurisdiction regarding how specific parks are to be used. However, my, my, my personal agenda for having this discussion tonight was to state right off the top is that I don't want this. This discussion tonight should not be about a jurisdictional turf war between the city council and Park and Rec or anybody else. This is not about a turf war. What I'm trying, what I am advocating for is the same thing I was advocating for when I was on the Board of Ed, same thing I've been advocating for the last seven, or I've lost track because I'm old and because I've been doing this for too long, how many years I've been on city council? The point of a city council is to represent always, at all times, in all aspects, what is in the best interest of the city as a whole? What is in the best interest of the city as a whole? And where the city council can express its views as elected officials, I want to make sure people understand that, as the elected representatives of our city, where we have an obligation is to step forward and try to input, and I hopefully influence decision-making of other boards and councils that will make the final decision. I think it's incumbent upon us, I think, as part of our responsibility in this. So that's, that's the big picture, specifically to this. I personally, I'm in favor of a skate park. Again, I've mentioned this before, and for people in the audience who may hear about this meeting, you know, I will make no bones about it. I, I used to be an editor for the X Games. I did the music videos, shot them, edited them. It's how I got into ESPN, by virtue of my experience working professionally on X Games, okay? I know the athletes, I know the perception of the sport, and this is what I want to address, is that at the end of the day, what is the number of the problem is we have a $100 and almost $80 million high school project, by far the biggest building project in the state of Connecticut at this time, clearly the biggest building project, I think, in the history of Torrington. And it is important that we do everything we can to support the build Torrington High School Building Committee and all of those people that are involved in this, and all the legislators who have provided us with the funds for this, that we make that as much a showpiece for Torrington as we possibly can. Everybody in this room, everybody in this room knows that what the mayor is fighting, what the city council is fighting, what Board of Finance is fighting is the fact that we don't have enough money to run this town the way we want to run it, okay? And one of, and the hump that we have been trying to get over in all of my years on the city council is being able to attract businesses and families to this city to grow our grand list, okay? That is the hump of the problem of getting Torrington to move forward to where we want it to be. One of the, one of the most attractive pieces of, most attractive assets we have in our city will be this $180 million school. And as a city, it seems to me, all boards, all councils need to try to maximize the impact of that high school to be able to sell it to potential newcomers to Torrington, okay? And to the, and now this, I know I'm going to hurt people's feelings, but I'm sorry. Again, that's why I said I cut professionally, I worked on X Games, and I know a good deal about X Games athletes, and here's the key, the perception. I'm well aware that X Games athletes, the people who use that park, they are not problematic people in any way, shape, or form. I have a great admiration and respect for them. Again, as somebody who professionally worked and supported that sport, okay, I have a great deal of respect for kids who do that, you know? It's always bothered me that at ESPN, if, for a long, long time, if a sport didn't have a ball or a bat, you know, or a hoop is attached to it, it wasn't, it was considered a second, not a top-tier sport, and that always bothered me because I always thought the extreme risks that was involved in doing those kinds of skateboarding and extreme sports was vastly overlooked. What is important, though, is not what we feel about it, it's the perception of what goes on in these parks, it's the perception of having that park at that entrance to that brand-new school. And I think it behooves, I think everybody, again, everybody needs to put their swords down and forget about a jurisdictional turf war here between this committee and that commission and this council, and step back and recognize, hopefully, that, yeah, for out-of-towners and business people and new people coming to our city, there's a good chance that it is a better look for that high school. It frames it nicer, it frames it, there will be less objection, there will be less of a concern seeing a volleyball court and, and young children playing in the splash pads than having, than having that skate park, whether or without the graffiti, whether or without, you know, certain kids who are going to gather there who are not, not the users of the park, but have reasons for being there other than use of the park. And all of that stuff goes away if we can find another location. It seems to me, with a town the size of this, there should be options for putting that park someplace else. Behind the armory, I know, has been kicked around for an awful long time, I understand it's not as visible, but it seems to me in 2022, with GoPro cameras, there's tons and tons of cameras, I don't know why we don't have this, it should be investigated, why we can't just put cameras in our parks and have those feed into the police department, and you got a guy sitting there or a person sitting there, and there you see the park, okay? And then it's, it seems minimally that the risk, I mean, the protection for that particular site then goes away dramatically. It's not a big problem, we should just think more clearly. But the first priority, I think, is to recognize that in order, the big thing here is the high school, you know, and showcasing that high school, showcasing that high school. That is what we all need to focus on. That is the moneymaker for our city. And I would please just ask all the people involved in this decision to step back, take a deep breath, and consider that. We're not going to get $180 million from the state for a very, very long time to do something positive for our city. We need to make it shine, people. We got to make it shine, you know? And if the people who are involved in the high school, in the bill, who have been studying this problem for years and years and years, are saying, that's not the best place for it, why don't we give them a little respect and say, okay, we agree. It's a very small park with a fence and ramps, and it seems like we should, in this city, find someplace we could put it that is acceptable to those athletes who are going to use it. So that's what I'm urging, and I would love to hear input from the rest of the council, and I would love people who elected these councilmen to hear from them as well. Thank you, Ma'am.
Other comments or questions?
Thanks. Thank you, Paul. I think that it's clear, thank you, Vic, for making it specifically clear, that the Park and Rec is ultimately, he's going to make the decision, but to Paul's point, I think we are elected, they are appointed, we all are serving as public servants, and all of our job is to And all of our job is to work together and create the best public policy for everyone that lives here. And so I think, you know, he's putting our swords down and we're not talking about a turf war. We really have to look at this globally and say, what is the best fit? And I think one part of that is we should always be mindful if we aren't being transparent. And I have a tremendous amount of respect for those folks that are on the Park and Rec Commission. And when I sat in that meeting and they pulled out their cassette player to record the minutes conceivably, that's, that's unwieldy. You can't expect a volunteer to then be listening to the cassette recording to properly give us the minutes. We have to be able to give them the tools they need to report back to the public. Mario is right. I, I did look at the agendas. They are the same. They're posted online. It's the exact same thing. But there has to be some details about those meetings. I understand that this particular meeting, the Park and Rec didn't know what the public was going to bring to them. So you're not going to have everything there and we were under the impression they would be discussing it there. They didn't know that. But, um, you know, I think there, there can be a way to make that much more clear to the public of what's happening in each meeting. And there are minutes posted, but the last one was September first. I know I've been to two meetings since then. Unless I'm missing it, I don't see them anywhere else on the website. So I think we could do a better job of making sure that people have as much information about the decisions that are being made in their city as possible and as early as possible. So I think we have a long way to go, but we can keep working towards improving that. Um, and I do, I share the same concerns and, and I think, Paul, you touched on it. We should give respect to the folks that are in front of the skate park every day, are educating our students, are on the Board of Ed and have seen the situations that arise at that skate park and have concerns about putting it at the forefront of this beautiful new school that hopefully will be a flagship for our city and will draw new families in. I think there has, there can be a place where that is much more aesthetically pleasing, gives everybody much more access to it, is downtown. So that all students can get there and don't have to just go to the high school. And also does take away that little bit of distraction when kids are itching to get outside and be there. Although I don't think that most of the issues at the skate park are actually skateboarders. I, I think we've established that, that it's more about just by the nature of the way that it's laid out, that there's ramps, that there's places to hide, that it's an easy place to escape and maybe not get caught. So I think those are all things that we have to be mindful of when we're deciding the best place to put this. And I do have a little bit of a concern that we just sort of wiped out the volleyball court. And I haven't heard anything about where that's going. I have a sixth grader who, you know, we're a family of dancers. I wish we brought back the Raderets because I was a varsity baton twirler and I'm sad that it's not there anymore. But that's it. Finally, I had a child who was excited about a sport. She tried out for volleyball in the middle school. I was happy there was middle school sports for her to do it. She didn't make it. That's a good problem because there were sixty kids trying out for volleyball. And so we talked about, you know, where she could go to learn her skills and where she could kind of get better so that maybe she could try out in high school. There isn't anywhere for her to do that, other than maybe her grandma's backyard. But there's not a court to go and play with your friends. And that would be a really great thing for, for kids to be able to have some access to. And there were students and families that played on that court and it's just gone and I haven't heard a plan for it to be replaced. And so I do have concerns about putting one sport ahead of another without having a plan to sort of put that other volleyball court somewhere else. Thank you.
And just, um, minutes are posted and up to date. So when you look at the website, you'll see, you pull up the Park and Rec Commission on the front, it brings up the minutes, the last ones start, were posted March second.
So is it a different, I'm at torringtonct.org/parksandrecreation, says agendas. And then if you go down to minutes, nine, one, eight, four, seven, seven, six, two, five.
There's another page. So the more recent, the first six months or one, two, three, four, five months are posted on the front page. So you're looking at the archive, I think. And I know the city council minutes are the same way, you know, the first five or the most recent five are posted, but.
Well, if I am a millennial who likes the internet and I still can't find it with your instructions. And that goes to a larger issue about making these be really easy for people to find. Like you should be able to go to torringtonct.org, type in parks and recreation and find them all.
Yeah, all right. So that's a website problem and I agree with you, but not a transparency problem, I would argue or defend.
I mean, we could disagree on that. Okay, ease of use is ease of use.
Okay, um, we're still open. Other comments?
Yes, uh, in my first term on the city council, it was, I believe it was two thousand and five. That's when the skate park was built and I was the lone dissenter against the location being there. And one of my concerns was, back then was parking and traffic flow, all right? But, uh, and of course I was a teacher there up till last June when I retired. And for, what is it, sixteen years, I watched that park go downhill. It was a unnecessary distraction to the education process at times. But when it was first opened, the intent, all intents were good because it was supposed to have be chaperoned and they did. I remember a Park and Rec employee parked in the parking lot whenever it was open. And then it was supposed to be locked, especially during the school day. Now, I don't know what happened to the locking up of it because it was just left open. And then, of course, uh, the supervision, somebody mentioned supervision, it really needed that supervision. So anyway, uh, I think the supervision issue was big. But I still think there's better places for it to go than at Best Park.
I guess my only comment is, Vic, thank you for sort of, it's not a turf war, it's really, and it's not jurisdictional. It's, it's really the Park and Rec Commission, if you remember, we did have, you know, a plea to do something with our Albert Street location. And we worked hard. I mean, I came to every public hearing, you know, voiced their, their ideas and their suggestions. And we never even had a, an agenda item for discussion. It was deferred back to the Parks and Recreation for, for their decision. You know, the members, and I look at the members of the Park and Recreation, I hate to say, have been around a long time, but Patty Child, Fran Decody, Jim Peskettor, Mike Fritsch and Casey, and Kana, you know, are people who I trust. And have longstanding reputations and commitment to the city of Torrington. I know individually, if I have an opinion, I'm going to address it with them directly. If I feel really passionate about it, I'll go to their meetings. But I think for this issue, I believe that they have done their due diligence and whatever they decide. You know, I will support as a citizen of the community and respect the work that they've done and dedicated really many, many years in overseeing. So that's my only comment.
Thank you, Councilwoman Whit. Any other comments or questions?
I'll make one quick, Mayor.
Yes.
I don't necessarily disagree with anything that anyone has said so far. However, I do see the need for a skate park. My only comment is that I think we should listen to this, you know, the citizens within our community and possibly find a better place for it. Um, I did have a chance to speak to a number of people who actually use the skate park. And I think one of the largest criticisms that they had was not necessarily the public safety or their own personal safety, but that this skate park actually lacked a lot of the, I don't know what you would call it, the ramps or the obstacles or the rails that they actually want to use. So a majority of the skaters go out of town to go to what they would call a quote unquote real skate park. So I found that pretty interesting as a echoed comment. I don't necessarily think that we should, uh, give up the volleyball court for the skate park because I believe that we owe it to the community to have both options available. And anything that gets kids outside and off of devices, I'm a thousand percent supportive of. But I think that there are other options for a skate park to be placed, placed at and possibly even enhanced. So that way, some of the skaters will stay in the community. Because otherwise, I think we're kind of kidding ourselves with what we're actually dealing with here. Uh, it's a great atmosphere. It's a, it's, it's better to have it than not have it. But I think we need to also look at it for what it is and say, hmm, maybe it needs a little bit more attention than we really believe it does, not just location, but what's at the location. So I'm open minded and supportive of both because I would hate to see losing one or the other. That's all I got.
Thank you, Councilman Oliver.
Just, just one thought.
Yes.
I have, uh, you know, I respect whatever decision the Park and Rec makes whenever they make that decision. But what I do hope is that there is programming offered at the skate park. So I think that would alleviate a lot of issues and, um, those are, that's some good information there, Councilman Oliver, about a more expansive park. So maybe we would have a true skate park. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, this wasn't a motion that required a vote. It was just discussion. So I guess we're good. Thank you all for coming out and sharing your thoughts. I do, um, I believe it is on April sixth that the Park and Rec Commission does have a meeting. And it is my understanding that it is their intention to take this matter up at that meeting. All right, moving into item number four. Mirror contract. Read it into the record, uh, motion to accept the recommendation of the Public Works Director to exercise our opt-out option as detailed in section three point two E of our current agreement with Mirror and authorize the mayor to negotiate a successor contract with USA Hauling and Recycling for both collection services and MSW recycled processing services for the period of twenty twenty-three and fiscal year twenty twenty-seven.
I'll move it now.
Thank you, Councilwoman Whit, and seconded by Councilwoman Cavanero. We have, Mr. True is here to talk.
And before you get started, I just, you know, in response to the comment in our public hearing, which thank you always for your thoughtfulness and your review. We did just have an ordinance committee meeting. You're welcome to come to the next one because there are.
We'll be talking about that too.
Ideas. This is, you did say it correctly. It is a crisis. And as people have sort of left, you know, with the crisis, you know, that they consider, this is a citywide crisis that, um, this council will really have to acknowledge and work on with our public works. But the ordinance that, you know, we're looking to amend, um, and hopefully, well, hopefully, three or four meetings out. We will bring it to the public, you know, for further comment. But your ideas are good and some of which have been, I think, tossed around. A lot of respect for the comment. I do agree it's a crisis. I think we all do. As well as our wonderful Public Works Director, Ray Drew, and it is one we need to work on together as a community. So, thank you.
These are public meetings. These ordinance committee meetings are public meetings, Tom, and, and you're absolutely welcome. We'd love to get your.
I'll do my best to drag him in next time.
We'll put you guys on opposite sides of the table.
No, we, we actually, we're, and generally, we're not on opposite sides. We had a very, um, like-minded thinking process.
Sure.
And we agree to disagree. So, you know, as we've, you know, talked about in many meetings before, um, that, you know, and Councilwoman Rhett put it succinctly, this is a crisis. And it's, it's something that we as a city, as a state and probably nationally have to address. And that is solid waste. And, um, and, you know, we've talked about it before. I'm not gonna, you, you all have the packet, I hope. And so I'm not gonna, kind of reiterate the memo to hit some of the highlights. We are at a crossroads. So we have two contracts that we've been under a mirror contract for, um, we are in the tenth year of a fifteen year contract. And then our USA hauling and recycling contract, we are in the five, six, seven, eighth year. And that contract expires on June thirtieth of this year. And each year when the Mira sets its tipping fees for the next fiscal year, we have historically enjoyed, um, you know, we have enjoyed the opt-out. It's a calculated opt-out. What Mira, um, understanding that they're going into decommissioning, they're trying to get to a position where they can honor the contract, but does not appear that they can do it financially. It was mentioned that they, they do subsidize, they subsidize heavy. Their estimated subsidizing for fiscal year twenty-three is over twelve million dollars. So we have a couple options that we talked about. So we received the notice from Mira, the board met in February, we received the notice to set their tipping fees. They also sent is what they call amendment number two to the MSA. So in that amendment, they're requesting municipalities to sign the, the amendment to for five years. And what it does is it reestablishes, it actually sets the opt-out tipping fee. In the current agreement we have, um, the opt-out is calculated. The opt-out, calculated opt-out for fiscal year twenty-three was seventy-two dollars. So anytime they set a tipping fee above the calculated opt-out, they, um, each municipality served has the right to terminate their contract with Mira. If you look at exhibit number two on page four, then this is the amended, they're requesting municipalities to sign. Having set the, if we agree to the MSA for twenty twenty-three, the tipping fee is a hundred and eleven dollars per ton. So that's six dollars more than we're paying now. In twenty, in twenty twenty-four, you can see it's one twenty-four, one thirty-one, one thirty-six, one forty-one plus any additional opt-out cost that they incur. So it's, it's not a concrete number, so there has potentially to go higher than those numbers. Now, we saw in twenty nineteen, there was a, the tipping fee was set. And then there was a mid-year adjustment where the tipping fee was increased mid-year. So in that particular year, there were two increases. So if we, so that's if we sign the agreement. We get these, um, more defined opt-outs. Therefore, if they set the tipping fee higher, we could opt out. But if they set it at it or lower, we cannot opt out, unlike what we currently have. So if we do nothing and stay status quo, stay a tier one long-term, the tipping fee for twenty-three is a hundred and sixteen dollars or eleven dollars more than we're paying now. So we have a decision to make as to what we want to do with Mira. Additionally, um, you know, USA has been our contracted hauler for many years. They've provide extreme satisfactory service. We get very few inquiries or complaints in regards to their service. And they have presented us with a proposal. It's preliminary. Obviously, we need, we would have to negotiate a contract. They have presented two options. So option one, um, you could in exhibit C, the front page, you can see the locked in, um, tipping fee for MSW. So that really accounts for about ninety-five percent of the cost of the service. And then you have the SSR, which is a single stream recycle capped at forty-five dollars a ton. That being that it would not exceed that. And going to the next page on page. And going to the next page on page eight, which is more of a detail of option one. Um, over the term of the contract versus our current status and what we currently have with Mira, the estimated savings over the five years is about a million dollars. And that doesn't include some potential savings that they, that we have discussed in regards to the collection side of. And then option two would be zero cost for recyclables. Um, obviously, the tipping fee would be much, not much higher, but it's, it would be about nine dollars and forty-two cents higher than their option one, but still lower than Mira. So with option one, paying for recyclables in it, and we, I think we all know we're with the value of recycling as it is, we're going to get to a point where we're going to pay for. Um, we have talked about all the programs we want to start, what we want to do in regards to, you know, reducing our solid waste, improving our recycling, um, source separating, uh, you know, um, you know, more services and then, you know, talking about our fee structures. The, the rate that we would pay for recycling is based upon the average commodity rate. So there's a base processing fee. And then if you look at page ten, as it, this is a snapshot of what the cost per ton of recycling would have been in September of twenty-one. It would have been five dollars and seventy-seven cents a ton. And the following uh, graph on page eleven, excuse me, compares the four scenarios of the tipping fees. And you can see with the, the op, with USA's proposal, option one, the tipping fee is the green line, so it is obviously the lowest one. And then the cost on page twelve, the cost under that proposal is still the lowest cost proposal. The difference between Mira at the one sixteen, um, and the the one oh five is a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. If we were to stay with Mira for one more year, that would be a hundred and fifty-four thousand, about one hundred dollars on an average of fourteen thousand tons. Um, so it is my recommendation that we exercise our right to opt out of Mira and negotiate a successor contract with USA Hauling and Recycling. So I would have any questions, if you have any questions.
The floor is open for questions.
You know, it's always, it's not a question, it's more of a comment. Um, so your number in terms of we were to go if we were to change right now, um, it's a hundred and ten thousand, what did you say?
Hundred and fifty-four thousand.
Hundred and fifty-four thousand. So that's, you know, really, when you look at that budget.
Well, if, if I may clear, clarify that.
Okay.
It would be if we were to do nothing versus the suggestion that we stay with Mira for one more year.
Right.
It would be an additional a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars.
Right. Which I almost feel like the Finance Committee, if they're in this room right now, would say there is no choice, you know, for us at this point. Um, no, because right now, I, I imagine the Budget Committee, which I am not, goodness. Um, and grateful for the work that they do, but I will be supporting this and hope that my
Yeah, I, I will support this as well with all due respect, Mr. Candever. Ultimately, the city pays you to come up with the best option or the, or the, or the best worst option, and I suppose in this case. And uh, I absolutely trust your judgment on this. And I would like to add, I would like to ask a question about this, since it was brought up at the last meeting, and I've been sort of chewing on this as is my want. Um, this problem, statewide problem, it's probably a complete Northeast United, um, northeastern American problem, I would assume, correct?
Oh, yeah, yeah. It's, it's, I mean, you know, you probably have some areas that um, are not so affected by it. There, there's probably more landfill space. Um, I mean, the northeast is very congested, so it's high stressors.
Yeah.
And it's highly populous too, so.
I'm going with this, Ray. Is, I know, we're struggling as a council, you're struggling as, you know, as, as Public Works Director to, to find the best, you know, available option that, you know, is doable. Are, are you part, do, do um, do your departments meet on a statewide level to discuss these? Are you in any discussions at a statewide level about a statewide solution here?
Um, you know, we have different um, groups that we discuss, um, you know, Public Works Directors, we have the Public Works List Serve, we, we have that open forum where we
But is this coordinated through the state, though, to, to, to pull in sort of the most experienced minds on this problem? Here, here's what I'm going with this, is what we're looking at right now, right? Our, our, our tweaks and modifications of a process.
Yes.
And where, where I would like to put out there, and you know, you can laugh if you want, but I, I was just thinking, you know, about this about for the last couple of months is since we are in this new world, and this is such an ongoing and cumulative problem, it's just going to get bigger and bigger, bigger. I would love to see, and I, I brought this up, um, I think people know I'm generally not a name dropper, but when, when the governor was in town, I'm saying this in case this effort does bubble up. Um, I, I put this in front, I was at a, a small meeting with a, a number of area Democrats. Okay, so I was at that meeting and we were talking about this. And, you know, he was admitting that he wasn't as, you know, aware of what, what possibilities there were out there. And I just had this idea. And if, if he was, you know, talking about, it was, it was a decent idea, he was going to look into it, but if there's any way that, that you communicate to the state, and here's the idea, the idea is simply that, based on the fact that um, necessity is the mother of invention, I was wondering if we're at a point historically in dealing with this massive problem where it might behoove us as an engineering state, okay? A manufacturing state that is chock full of engineers and universities that, that make their nut by, by training and teaching engineers. If maybe the state of Connecticut couldn't sponsor literally an awards, okay? Of a significant amount that could come up with a, a, a new idea, you know, a radically different idea to solve this problem.
Yes.
Um, and make it, you know, so that the award would be based, it would, it would be based on, you know, obviously two things you'd want, proof of concept and scalability, proof of concept scalability. That met those criteria. And it would be, I mean, I'm not talking tens of, I'm talking about like a million, two million, whatever it would take to get well-paid engineers who are like my engineering father and his buddies, who would meet on, you know, in his spare time, he was always noodling and doodling different ideas, you know, kicking it around when we were a manufacturing powerhouse. Engineers do that. And I'm just thinking, if there was some way to goose innovation on this idea beyond the meat and potato guys who are dealing with this on a month-to-month, year-to-year, like you basis, who have to just deal with the problem that's in front of them now, to look at this in a much broader way, get some of our best minds, with all these universities and all these engineers, look at this. If that's an idea that you could bubble up somehow, you know, by all means, you know, run with it. I, I think we, it's a no-lose idea. If, if a good idea comes forward, it'll be worth its weight in gold to Connecticut, and if it doesn't, we don't lose a dime. It's gotta be proof, you know, proof of concept scalability.
Yeah, no, I mean, I agree with you. I mean, you, we have to get, I mean, we have to be thinking innovatively and outside the box as to, you know, what's the solution? You know, we, we're not going to recycle our way out of this. We can't recycle enough. You know, we can do better. We can do better than twenty percent, you know, maybe we can get to forty percent.
You've been telling us for a long time.
We're not going to recycle our way out of it. We have to come up with more innovative ideas. So we talked about this last time. Source separating glass and using glass as an aggregate in, in concrete. You know, that's an innovative idea that, that somebody's working on. Um, and I agree with you a thousand percent. This is what we have to do. And we have to do it as a group because it's not just Torrington, it's all of us.
Yeah.
It, it, there um, twenty, twenty twenty, CCSSM, right? Started twenty twenty, it's Connecticut Coalition for Sustainable Materials Management. We as municipal leaders, um, the mayor, several of my staff, um, many, many, many meetings. Um, seventy-two other municipalities of just how we're going to attack this, this crisis. It's
With the tools at your disposal and, and what I'm, what I'm, to your point, you know, we, we've got to find new tools here, you know, and a much broader for the next generation of this problem. And, you know, it, it just seems like it's time to um, to goose the, uh, in, you know, necessity is the mother of invention. Let's, let's put a couple million down. If the state could do that, maybe you would, you know, hit some page or something. So bubble it up, take the idea, Ray, run with it, it's yours. If it works out, you can take credit. It's not, you blame me. It's okay.
Like I said, I may agree. It has to be strategic, it has to be new ideas, it has to be, you know, something, I don't know, it's a super plasma furnace or something.
It's not going to come from the Torrington City Council, or no offense to anybody here.
No, no.
Generations of brilliant engineers in the state, let's, let's
But we, I mean, we need to attack it, you know, and um, because it's, it's not short-term. It, we, we can't be looking at five years from now or, or ten years from now. You know, it's like when the founders of Torrington, they probably, maybe they envisioned Torrington as it is today, maybe they didn't, but you know, they would be astonished that what Torringtonians have done over all those years and the accomplishments and, and yeah, we can do it.
Well, money always helps.
Money does help.
Monetary prices.
We are working with the state on, on a particular grant on some of these programs, yes.
I think
Which will be bringing to you soon.
Yeah, our experience, uh, in all of these phone conversations and uh, committee meetings and Zoom meetings and uh, webinars is, um, there is great reluctance on the part of the state to push any mandate about this on the municipalities. And there's a great deal of disagreement between the municipalities as to what's the right approach. So we really are kind of swimming in the deep end by ourselves here on this one.
We're politicians, we're not engineers.
I mean, there are
This is an engineering problem.
Some of the, I mean, some of the great things when we talk about that, uh, C S, CMM.
Yes, C S M M.
Yes, yeah. But, you know, it's about working with the manufacturers and the producers of products and how are they, you know, how are they wrapping them? It's, you know, it's reducing the wrapping that comes with your, um, with your, um, whatever your purchase is. It's about um, getting rid of this, it's getting rid of the plastics, it's getting rid of the, it's recycling the glass. Glass can be ground up, can become, you know, a particulate that gets mixed in with um, concrete. You know, that then becomes a sidewalk or, uh, there are really great ideas. Um, but not one of them solves the problem. It's that all of them solve the problem, and that's where we're at. Which one do we do? We've met with a, a young Torrington kid, I'm, I'm reasonably sure he may have gone to school with Councilwoman Hona, um, Brian Paganini, who started Quantum.
Biopower.
Thank you. And, you know, this is, you know, food digestion, it's, it's organic digestion, turns it into an energy. You know, he's a Torrington boy. He sat down with us at least half a dozen times to figure out how to do this. That's where a great deal of money has to be invested. And I think that the state is also a little shy because all of the money they invested in Mira didn't work out the way they intended.
Yeah.
So there's, you know, there's all of that. I agree with you. You know, a lot of very smart people. The idea that it's probably going to be some teenage kid that actually comes up with a solution.
Well, I think it's also, it's not only the producers, it's not only our
It's everything. I don't know if you remember back when
That's basically human behavior. I mean, to change the behavior, you know, which we all who sat on the council and went through the public hearing, I hate to bring it up again. You know, where we had to change behavior, we had the most people in, in opposition to any change.
Yes.
And listen, I walk my corner, which is quite a big corner, um, pick up these freaking nippers, I'm sorry. But it is, it's like, I know that, you know, it's the same person, it's the same brand, it's, you know, whatever, but it's um, it's, it's a much broader, you know, issue, and it is a crisis. Because, you know, it's recognizing, you know, that we have no place to put our stuff.
We don't.
Our solid waste.
You know, where I mean
It's, you know, anyway, so I would like to move the motion.
Okay. I hear, um, your question, yes. Um, then last call for comments, if there are no. All right, then I'll call this motion all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Paul. I, item five is a, I'll entertain a motion to authorize a mayor to enter into a contract with Palati for data collection and town analytics to be used for marketing, business attraction, et cetera. Funding for this comes from the Building Healthier Communities Grant Fund, uh, the portion of that grant fund that was set aside for marketing data collection.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron.
Second.
And seconded by Councilwoman Rowett, for their questions.
Will this, yes, mayor, uh, this information, just will we, will this be public information?
It will. So um, the data that gets collected will be presented in, you know, colorful graphs and easy to read uh, uh, information. It'll be presented in the form of a dashboard. You know, as in listening to Councilwoman Hona's concern about the ease in which we navigate our website. You know, how easy is it for us to find that information? Um, this is just that, you know, it creates this dashboard, and from there, you'd be able to mine whatever additional data that you're looking for. Uh, if you look to the contract, there are other add-ons that we can look at. Uh, things like ability to pay when it comes to contract negotiations, uh, the uh, uh, budget analyses.
It's essentially a two-year contract, right?
It is a two-year contract, yes. And this is a um, vendor that is, um, was hired by CCM, our Connecticut Conference of Municipalities. And the reason the price is so inexpensive is because CCM is partnering and covering a portion of the cost.
Okay. Do we have, do you, have you verified that their stuff is, it's quality?
High quality, yes. I, I'm hoping that, uh, no, I know.
I know enough survivors who have been in the pipeline to city governments for a long, long time, and um, it's, they're not
So what I liked, yes, what I liked about this company, and again, I mean, they come to us through our CCM uh, membership. What I liked about them is not only um, with the ease of uh, use and um, and understanding the simplicity and clarity of the um, data that gets presented. Um, but they're also being very careful to make sure that when we're doing a comparison, um, they're actually comparing us to similar towns and communities. Uh, for our Board of Education days, it was the Dirk or the Erg that we were always looking at.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah. So um, we actually select those towns, you know, and they always ask us to look for that aspirational town also.
Yeah, yeah.
So that you're not just saying, you know, how do we compare to the rest of the communities that are in a, that are distressed? What's that aspirational community that we want to get to?
Got it. That's great. No, I'm all for it.
All right. Other questions, comments, concerns? I'll call the motion all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item six, I'll entertain a motion. Oh, I guess we could do this all in one. Um, I'll do it in two. Six point one, I'll entertain a motion to approve the mayor's appointment of Donovan Riley to the Planning and Zoning Commission and Diane Carroll as an alternate member of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I'll move it.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Rowett, seconded by Councilwoman Hona. Any questions on the appointments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, and then six point two, I'll entertain a motion to approve the mayor's appointment of the following, that would be Ken Edwards as a regular member of the Zoning Board of Appeals, and Stephen Iven as a new member of the Conservation Commission. Thank you, Councilwoman Hona.
Second.
And seconded by Councilwoman Cavanaro. Any questions on?
Who are these people?
I know, really, never heard of them. I always have to be careful. I mean, I had to check and make sure that we're observing our minority um, party representation in this one. You did, thank you. All right, so that crosses that question off. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, I'll entertain a motion by the city council here enacting as water pollution control authority to approve the following payment from four ninety sanitary sewer capital and permit to rate Pierce Engineers of Boston for seventeen thousand five hundred seventy-eight dollars and ninety-six cents. Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron.
Second.
And second by Councilwoman Rowett, are there questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, item eight, I'll entertain a motion to accept the fair housing resolution. That's number one, four, three, two, two, seven, and fair housing policy statement dated March twenty first, twenty twenty two. Thank you, I heard Councilwoman Waldron and Councilwoman Oliver. Um, and this is an annual resolution that we adopt when it comes to fair housing. Questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, um, item nine, I know this is a holdover, but Rista Malanka is pulling together a full report, I think she said at this point, we only, we still only have two hundred and fifty-four responses on this ARPA. Um, so we're gonna push it back out, you know, one more time period and bring it back on April fourth, so I guess I'd look for a motion to table this.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron, and second by Councilwoman Kevin Arrow. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, item ten, I'll entertain a motion to accept the building report dated February twenty, for the month of February twenty twenty two.
So moved.
And second by Councilwoman Hona. Questions on the report? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, item eleven, I'll entertain a motion to release the sewer use liens in corporation councils member dated March twenty first, twenty twenty two regarding release of.
So moved.
Second, Councilwoman Waldron, second by Councilwoman Kevin Arrow. Questions on the memo? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, item twelve, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorize the tax refunds indicated on the list dated March twenty first. Your Councilwoman Waldron.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Manichia. Uh, questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, item thirteen, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by department heads.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron. Second by Councilwoman Hona. All in favor?
Aye.
Ray, is there anything else you wanted to add this evening? Thank you. Linda, our recycling coordinator is in the room, in the house, any comments? Sure, yes.
I have been very busy with different contacts, vendors, trying to set up different programs for our citizens to help us achieve our recycling and reducing our solid waste goals. A lot of them have just been small stepping stones to building new programs, but they are all in the works and the excitement that, the feedback I'm receiving is very, very strong, very positive. I think people are aware of the crisis we're in and realize that the only way out of it is to do something. So I'm working as hard as I can to get programs involved and, and hopefully in the next month or so, I'll have a program to present to council.
Thank you, Linda. Anything from the city clerk's office? Okay. I think usually see Ed, Ed Towsley's on, is there? Are they still hanging in with us? Oh, is he? All right, I don't see anyone else. All right, I will move into item fourteen and entertain a motion to consider business by mayor and members. Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron. Second by Councilwoman Hona, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? To the screen first, anything this evening, Councilwoman Oliver?
No, thank you, mayor.
Councilwoman Waldron.
I'm all set there, thanks.
Okay. Councilwoman Hona.
No, thank you.
I always have something, thank you for the clock. I understand Heather had a great influence in that. No, it's great to have a working clock and also just the visit from the governor to kids play. I, as a T D C member and council member, it was great. And I was so impressed with the relationship between our small businesses in, in the downtown area. They connect, I guess, through email or whatever social media they use, but and they're all in sync with, you know, some of the same issues and, you know, since I, most of my life was in New Britain with my work, it's nice to be home and see some of that. But, you know, it's, it's a great community of small businesses and I thank them for their patience with, with what they do.
Well said. Councilman Kevin Arrow. All right, I'm just going to run down because I know this has been kind of long. I need more water, just a quick update, so FEMA is working as, I don't, they're, they're like the, the facilitator of all of these grants.
Interagency advisory group. What through FEMA, what they try and do is you submit, they have a request, we submitted eleven projects through them. And what they do then is they kind of find, you know, kind of analyze your project and see which agency for funding it might work in out of the hundred and seventy-nine different federal agencies to see where funding might come from.
So of those eleven capital projects, none of them are light in the dollar amounts, but all of those capital projects came out of our local long-term recovery committee work. They included public safety, in particular, public safety complex, housing, cybersecurity, school renovation upgrades, transportation, infrastructure improvements. So we sit and wait now, they, per this last PowerPoint presentation, they then review them and they'll come back to us. As a distressed municipality, they do give some weight to our, to our projects. I will tell you on page fourteen of this, their dates are off, they have, you know, twenty twenty-one through the whole thing, I think everything February through March is actually twenty twenty-two. And that's where we are in their timeline for review. Very quickly. Audit, we're working on the final document review. We want to wrap this up, it has taken a little bit longer. Bloom Shapiro is who we contracted with, they merged with C L A, that's Clifton Larson Associates. Always, when you have a merger like that, there's not so much a change in staffing, but a change in methodologies. So it's been a little bit challenging for us, but the goal is obviously to get that document finalized because we are also working on a timeline to get our springtime bond sales in the queue with a goal to get the S and P rating call done in mid-April and that next round of bonding out in late April, early May. Governor Lamont's visit was very successful, not only nice for us to be able to showcase some of the successful projects that have been funded by the state here in the city of Torrington. But also to highlight the those pioneers, I call them, that are ready to go out and do more, so it's Artie and his brother Tim at Vinnie's. We will be meeting with the governor again to go through the old standard plant, which is another grant opportunity that we received. It was very nice to hear in the comments from Deputy Commissioner Dom that Torrington is looked upon very favorably with these grant applications because we have proven successes multiple times. So when they get a grant application from us, they automatically are moving us up in, on their list. I heard that again on Thursday when we had the Torrington Cultural District walk-through with D E C D representatives, the Shapiro, Tamra, Dimitri, Jen Schofield, who's actually a Torrington resident. Again, very positive feedback, you know, and with every question, you know, and what are your next steps? And we're ready, we have, our next steps are A B C. She also said that there is a buzz at the state level about what we're doing. You know, and I often say it, it's, you know, it's the vision of this board, it's the vision of our planning and zoning commission that, you know, when they have an opportunity to step in front of a problem like solid waste, we don't shy away from it, we're ready to attack it. Blight, we have been successful in chasing down blight fines.
Yep.
You got a nice healthy check.
We just got a nice eighty-two thousand plus check the other day.
Yes.
We're gonna sell a piece of property that we foreclosed for, I believe it's forty-one thousand dollars. So that's going to build up the, the Blight fund for future projects.
And along with that is the demolition of the property at Newfield Spring Road, this you will recall, you approved the contract for us to do that. They've done the asbestos abatement, so if you drive by that right now, it looks like it's been stripped. But we are actually waiting for Torrington Historic Preservation Trust to sign off so that we can let the contractor then take the building down. And it's such a perfect spot for a park. Great.
Yeah, excuse me, just on that very note, could we get, it's at the earliest convenience on the agenda, a Yankee peddler update where we are?
Absolutely.
People continue asking us about this and I'm just not sure anymore.
Absolutely, yes, no, I'll be happy, and as you heard Vic suggest that our Blight fund is becoming quite healthy.
Yeah.
Utilizing those funds to pursue the abandoned bladed properties litigation. Defending the constitution, the constitutionality claim is going to probably be costly. So yes, we will, we'll bring back another update on the, on the Yankee peddler.
Well, I think that's just an update, just to interject, you know, just the bullet points.
Yes.
To your point.
Nothing fancy.
Like the history of it.
Yeah, actually, what I could do is I can print out the, the judicial websites docket list. And you can see every time we had a status conference at the judge's chambers or, or at, it's, I can't say it's the chambers, it's being done by Zoom. So I can print out that docket, you can see that every month where there's something that we're going back at the judge.
There is a hearing, it's good.
We do have a hearing scheduled after the last status conference meeting, we said this is it, you know, the sprinklers, the sprinkler system froze. The water pipes burst, the amount of water that fell became quite a bit of pressure against the window. And the water broke the window, spilled into the street, our street department had to come out and sand, D O T had to come out and sand. And that's when we went to the judge and said, you know, this is it, we're done, we're done, we, we can't put enough punch lists together for these people to do, you know, to buy two more months and sixty more days and sixty more days. So the judge agreed and we do have a hearing on our application, but it's not until June twenty ninth. In the meantime, there's work that we are working with attorney Nelligan on. And we will be looking for an attorney that can represent us on constitutionality.
I think, you know, some of the people we both know.
Oh, my gosh, yes.
Are, are interested in, you know, there's some, some serious money behind that idea. And they're just asking.
Absolutely. Okay. Yeah, there's a certain former councilwoman who keeps telling me she's going nowhere until she knows we have that peddler. So, um, vehicle replacement, it's solely any, I, I just realized we have another former councilwoman in the chambers. Yes, yeah. So vehicle replacement.
She would have just come up here and asked, I mean, she would have.
Replacement committee met on Friday, they've adopted or approved the fiscal twenty-three budget documents with updates are now being put into the spreadsheet, we'll be sending the information out to departments so they can update their vehicle replacement line item in their budgets. And that document will be coming to the council in the next few meetings. Any questions on any of that? All right, I'll move into item fifteen. I'll entertain a motion to open the meeting to the public to comment on agenda items only.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron. And second by Councilwoman Hona. All in favor? Any opposed? Our agenda items only, comments? All right, there being no further business before the board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Councilwoman Rowett, second by Councilwoman Manichia, all in favor? Any opposed, we are adjourned.